Susan Brier.
We are live, we are live on television.
Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board of the County of East Hampton Meeting of July 22nd, 2020, another virtual meeting. Again, thanks to the folks at LTV, to the Planning Board staff and the Planning Department staff for their hard work in getting us on, on air. Also to Thomas Crouch, our counsel, for getting us on air. So we have quite a few number, quite a few matters on tonight's agenda in work session and in the regular meeting. The first matter is 85 Stone Road Bluff Cottage, Bluff Crest Cottage, I'm sorry. Is the applicant on, in our Zoom meeting? Are they here?
What would the applicant's name be?
Well, it's Joel Halsey.
It's Joel, yeah. Who else would it be?
I have not seen it.
But there's a, there's a couple of others that are in that Brian said were, were appearing for this, so Mr. Blue Dorn.
Yes, that's correct, that's correct, landscape architect for the applicant.
You know, are you guys expecting Joel Halsey?
We are, yeah, he just sent over the Zoom call info, so they're probably logging on now.
Okay, LTV, if Joel Halsey is trying to get in, please let him in.
No problem, please remind me the name of this.
This matter?
Correct.
It's, it's the site plan applica- evaluation.
Firestone.
85 Firestone Road.
Thank you.
Brian can go ahead and start if.
Yeah, that's all right with me, Brian, Joel will be able to join us. Brian, why don't you get started?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, everybody, this is Brian Frank from the Planning Department. If, if you can see my shared screen, what you see is an image of the subject property, this is 85 Firestone Road, and this is a representation of the existing conditions on the property. You may notice that the north arrow is off to the left-hand side, so this is a shot of the property facing east, this is Fort Pon Bay along the shoreline, and these are the current conditions on the property. A good landmark is it's just north of the Montauk. The property is currently improved with four resort unit cottages, structures, they're, they're separate units that were built in 1967, there's about 112 square feet of decking on the property total, the property is extensively cleared, there is an existing dirt driveway and parking area, there is, there are two access points, one at the north end of the, and the south end of the property. There is obviously Fort Pon Bay, the bluff runs parallel to the shoreline here. For a couple of the board members, they may be familiar with this from an application that was the subject of an initial review in 2016, where the application was to demolish the existing improvements and build three separate resort units, each with their own swimming pool, and, and larger size than, than what's proposed right now. The property does have steep slopes along a portion of the northern property boundary, and this area had traditionally, or had been identified as part of the Bluff Crest by the Natural Resources Department and Planning Department in the late 80s and throughout the 90s, and that was the subject of a zoning board of appeals, appeal of that determination that resulted in a default denial, it was a 2-2 decision by the zoning board, there was no consensus, that made it a default denial, and it went to Suffolk County Supreme Court in an Article 78, and they ruled in favor of the applicant overturning the building inspector, which established the bluff line on the property as, as being solely parallel to the shoreline here and does not include this, this area to the north anymore. This application is to demolish the existing improvements and build four detached units, I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you the, the survey if, if I can.
Brian, while I got, while you're taking a moment on that last picture, the red lines are skewed a little bit, is that, that right?
Correct, thank you for reminding me, Mr. Chairman, the property lines don't line up in this area of Montauk precisely, so these structures that look like they're encroaching onto the property don't, the, the property line runs just north of them, so that there aren't the encroachments, and thank you for pointing that out.
And that'll be on the other side too, those, the houses that are there now, the improvements that are there now, those are within the lines.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sam, that, that red line is based on Suffolk County tax maps as opposed to a survey, but it's off anyway.
Yeah, no, yeah, we.
Yeah, there, there are some places where it just doesn't follow the, they call it orthorectification, it just doesn't follow the curvature of, of the earth properly, is how it's been explained to me, and that's why some areas it, it just doesn't line up. This is the survey of the property that's submitted with the application, this is the most recent survey, and shows where the existing improvements are. They, they show up a little better on the landscaping plan because that's in color, and I'm, I'm wondering if it would be more illustrative if I switched to that in, instead of the survey, but the, the landscape plan is based on the survey. As I was saying, there are four detached units proposed, each of these units are 600 square feet, it includes about 660 square feet of unfinished basement, about 578 square feet of first floor patio, and 668 square foot roof yet, roof deck on each unit, each unit is one story. They are going to formalize the ingress and egress, I believe the ingress is proposed at the northern portion of the property, and the egress is proposed in the southern portion of the property. You can see that there are seven diagonal parking spaces proposed, including one ADA parking space, and that's something that probably needs to get refined a little bit as, as part of the Planning Board's evaluation, and just because it does, it, the improvements show up a little bit better here, I'll, I'll go back to the survey if that's your preference, but I, I think on the screen especially, this may be a little bit better for discussion purposes.
Yeah, that's nice and clear, actually.
Yeah, this is good, I'd leave this.
Yeah, leave this up.
Okay.
That's nice and clear, actually.
So the.
Yeah, leave this up.
There are several issues that we'd like to bring to the, to the Board's attention. One is that the application will require a variance from the zoning board of appeals to allow the units to be reconstructed as separate units. The town code requires transient motel units to be in multiple unit structures.
Brian, can you hold up for one second? Everybody who's got, please, folks, you gotta turn your TVs, your, your, your volume, or whatever it's called, your microphone on to mute if there's anything going on in the background, because it makes it very hard to hear the presenter. Go ahead, Brian, thank you.
Sure. So the town code requires transient motels to be in multiple unit structures, and these structures are proposed separately. Variance applica- variance from the zoning board of appeals will be required to further entertain this application as designed. The principal building inspector in October did issue a determination or an interpretation at the request of the applicant affirming that transient motel units need to be in multiple unit structures. And at some point, the Planning Board can decide to what extent, if at all, they want to comment to the zoning board on the merits of that variance application. One area that we'd like to bring to your attention is the extent of clearing, as it's been proposed in one of the units, this area of the property right here has some very steep slopes associated with it, associated with what had been formally identified as part of the Bluff Crest, or in this case, the Bluff Face. The clearing that has been proposed to the northeast of this cottage is, is very limited, and it's certainly been my experience over the years that anytime you're doing clearing on slopes, you, usually the extent of, of clearing needs to be a little bit greater than just a few feet, unless you're driving retaining walls to, to stabilize an area, and that's not proposed here, there is a several-foot drop-off in the vicinity of this cottage, and it's, and it's likely that the extent of short-term disturbance necessary to build this unit is underrepresented. The application does include an IA sanitary system proposed in the southeast corner of the property, it does propose connecting the cottages which are suspected or, or believed to be served by a private well right now to public water. We received informally recent correspondence from the applicant just today that the water main is actually closer to the property than indicated in the evaluation memo, our GIS maps have the nearest water main about 120 feet away, and according to Joel Halsey, the agent, the water main is about 20 feet away, and the proposal is to connect this property to public water. With regard to the parking, the driveway indicates that gravel is proposed, and it's suspected that that includes the parking spaces as well, but as the board knows, an ADA compliant parking space needs to be an improved hard surface. And it, this is the location of the ADA compliant space now, it's also noted that you would want to have an improved access from the parking space to whatever unit is, is being provided ADA access, and it probably makes more sense to make one of the spaces up here ADA compliant if this is going to be an improved surface. Right now, these paths that you see around the properties are a combination of either grit or gravel, or in this case, grass, and that's probably not adequate to provide ADA compliance from the parking space to the, to the building. Lighting plan still needs to be submitted, and the other element that we wanted to bring to the Board's attention is the landscaping. Landscaping plan includes all native species, all of the, the trees and shrubs that you see indicated on the plan are native and occur in Montauk, you know, I'm sure Alex can speak to it in more detail, but, you know, they have to be adapted to the coastal condition so they don't get burned. But one area that the Planning Department is a little bit concerned about is the proposed meadow, and you see that notation here on the site plan, and that includes all of this area that's shown in brown or, or beige, and it, why, it may be a laudable intent to naturalize such a large area of the property, over time, that's likely to be impractical for a couple of reasons. This is, this is all proposed to be vegetated with switchgrass, it, it's a great native bunch grass, it's very hardy, it's very drought tolerant, it's adapted to a wide range of, of conditions, it grows about three feet high, and, and if you've ever walked through tall grass in Montauk at, at this time of year, you know that, that these areas are really favored habitat for ticks, and it's, especially this close to Collodin Point, which even 20 years ago was arguably the tick capital of Long Island, it, it's probably not practical to expect a, a tall grass meadow, if you want to call it that, to remain as, as, as the predominant landscaping around these improved structures. There's a lawn area down here, the switchgrass, that's proposed in, in, you know, landward of the Bluff Crest here is, is excellent and very appropriate, but I, I think to indicate this as, as a significant revegetation is probably going to be impractical over the long term. I will remind the Board that it's an unlisted action, and the Planning Board, you know, can declare lead agency, and may want to assume lead agency status for this application. Beyond that, I want to make myself available for any, any questions from the Board members.
Thank you very much, Brian. Let's hear from Joel, the applicant, Joel, you there? Is Joel Halsey on the line?
I can't see Joel Halsey in Zoom, there is one caller on the phone line.
Alex.
Chairperson, there is one caller on the line.
Who is it?
I will unmute them now.
Hi, is it, can you hear me, it's Andy Hammer and Joel Halsey.
Ah, very good, all right, we were hoping that you were on, you heard all the, you heard Brian report that to us?
Yes, yeah, I do believe that I have quite a bit of my project team is also online too, I know, is Alex.
Well, we got a call-in number for Zoom, so that.
Yeah, we, we got a call-in number for Zoom, that didn't seem to work, so we called in the original number on, on the LTV website, so that's how we're reaching you right now, and I can't.
Zoom line had like 20 people on it.
Yeah, the Zoom line I can't seem to get into, but that being the case, we did listen to Brian.
Andy, did you hear, did you hear Brian, I presume you did?
Yes, we did.
Good, good, okay. All right, well, the phone's yours.
I have a quick question.
Okay.
Are you guys withdrawing the previous application that you saw back in 2016?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I couldn't hear you, could you repeat your question?
Sure, 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 can you, are you withdrawing the previous application from 2016?
Oh.
Kathy, this is Joanne, if I can answer that.
This is just a new submission, it's not a new application.
Okay, so it's, it's modifying that original application then, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. All right, Andy, Joel, it's all yours, go ahead.
Okay, sure, I think most of what Brian is talking about, or at least the most significant issues on this property are probably the natural resource special permit issues, et cetera, with respect to the revegetation, well, oh, we're out of jurisdiction, oh, I'm sorry, I, I take that back, however, there were some of his points about the landscaping plan and the grading on the property, or that the potential for grading in that one corner of the property, we did speak to the architects, and we think that there's going to be minimal grading required for that little deck in the corner, it could be put on post, you know, helical piles.
If you actually go to the property, sorry, this is Joel Halsey, if you actually go to the property in, in the approximate area there, you'll see that there's a spot elevation of about 36 feet on building 1A, then you'll see the topography line goes only, goes to 34 feet, it's roughly, you know, three square feet of the deck that would extend over that 34 square, that 34 topography line, and it literally only goes over that topography line by another foot maybe, I did speak with the architect, and they said that they could probably just do a floating deck in that area and not have to have any kind of piles, and, and just be able to support the deck further, you know, further in where it wouldn't require to be in those, that slope, and furthermore, if you go into that, actually go into that area, you'll see that it's predominantly vegetated with wisteria, which is a non-native invasive species, and that area where that corner of the deck's going to be is essentially still pretty flat, it, it doesn't really get steep until you go further into that, that feature there.
Are you talking about 1A or 1B? I think you're talking about 1B, aren't you?
Yeah, 1B, sorry, did I say 1A? 1B, sorry. And to the point of the ADA space, we're looking into that right now, it's probably easily fixed. And with regards to the meadow, that's something we're, we're going to have to work out with the, the planning board to come up with something they want, we see Brian's concerns about the ticks in the, in the switchgrass, and that's definitely a valid concern.
But we do think that we could submit a protocol that would, you know, give you a, a good, good indication of our intent to maintain this as a beautiful meadow, and use organic methods to ensure, I mean, it really is going to be a beautiful landscape, a lot of thought went into that, so I wouldn't just discard it, because the applicant really put a lot of thought and effort and energy into developing that plan, and we think it would be a real significant improvement over the existing property that you see today. I did want to address one of Brian's points, when I was talking about the zoning board, it was the variance issue with respect to the multiple unit structures, this is a very unusual provision of the town code that has been, to our knowledge, violated in the past unknowingly, and there was never variances issued, I think there's a couple of.
Sea View Apartments in Montauk.
Sea View Apartments in Montauk were approved with the same code provision, they were approved as separate, separate buildings. This property is currently improved with four separate resort units.
In a resort zone.
In a resort zone, so I mean, it, it currently does have that, I guess you'd call it a non-conformity, however, the intent of creating three separate, or four separate units was to parrot that, this is a strange resort zone in that it's largely a residential neighborhood, so I think the, you know, the, the greater good here is to try to mimic and parrot what's there, and in keeping with the residential neighborhood, and I don't think there's anything less residential in appearance than a multiple unit structure, you know, structures that contain four units that are attached, I, I just think would, would be significantly against the character of the neighborhood, and I think probably the neighborhood wouldn't like it as much as these are very small, well-designed, well-sighted structures that I think were done for the purpose of ensuring that there's continuity and, and with the, the neighborhood, and, and it's the appearance we think makes the most sense for these structures. The four existing units right now are kind of, you know, grouped together without any, you know, they're very symmetrical, but it wasn't done with an eye towards really trying to minimize the, the impact to the site, and creating, we think, a much more beautiful landscape, and I think this is something that, you know, we will argue that to the zoning board, but the thinking behind it was we were hoping you would support this type of arrangement, you know, of trying to maintain this residential character of resort zone property.
And anything else that you want to impart?
It.
Well, other than, you know. If not, let me, if not, let, let me go right to Lou, so we get the committee, we get the, the board in a discussion here. Lou?
All right, Lou Cortese, yeah, I, I, I think, you know, I like this project, actually, and I think it's an improvement of their last submission, I think that was problematic because they went up a second story on at least one building, I'm not sure if it was more than one, so the fact that they're keeping these one story is much improvement, in my opinion. With regard to the square footage, I mean, this is not a big deal, but I just want to point it out, that there is a maximum of 1,200 square feet, which of course, these units being 600 square feet fall well below that maximum, but, you know, just keep in mind that there are unfinished basements in each one of these that are 662 square feet, if those are ever finished, that would bring you above the maximum, but even there, it's still not a big deal, I mean, it would be over the maximum by 60 odd square feet, so it's, you know, it's not a big deal. The big question, which, you know, we don't have authority over or jurisdiction over, is the, is the variance that they need to get from the zoning board, but we do have a say, we can give our opinion, and my opinion is that I, 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 I'm for giving the variance, because, you know, when you think about this logically, would you rather have a more typical conventional transient motel, hotel, where maybe it's two stories, two units on the ground floor, two units on the top floor? Obviously not, you know, it would cause more, I think, more traffic, the, the type of use for that kind of structure, that kind of establishment is more intensive, more traffic oriented. To connect these so that it complies with that regulation, I think is a silly, would be a silly thing to do, because, you know, right now, in terms of aesthetics, you know, I think they've done a great job, the way it's laid out, the way the landscaping is laid out, I know Brian had an issue with the tall grass, which, you know, is a good point, but given the extent and the, the expense that it looks like the applicant is willing to put into the landscaping, I'm sure they could correct that and still keep the high-quality level of landscaping that they show here, and maybe mitigating that tick problem with the tall grass. The, the only other issue that, you know, that Brian brought up that I sort of, you know, agree with, with Brian, having walked the property, there is, there is a very deep slope, and there is very short amount of space between where they have the northern line of that unit and the drop-off, and they're, they're saying that they only need to clear three feet in order to accommodate that, it just seems really very, very tight, I think they're going at the maximum level that they can, and I would suggest, if it's, if it's possible, and I hope it is possible, that that unit, the 1B unit, which is at the northwest corner of the property, if that could be moved south somewhat, so that you have more room between the border of that structure and that steep drop-off, so if they could work that out, work out the landscaping a little better, I think this, you know, this project is, is good to go, I think the parking is fine, that note that Brian made about moving the ADA parking might be a good idea, but, you know, all in all, with those few caveats, I think this project is a good one.
Thank you very much, Lou. Let's go from your side of the table this time, which would mean, since, I should have mentioned that the odds that, that Ed Crew is not going to be with us tonight, so Ian, if you would.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a lot to add, actually, I think that Joel did a great, I'm, I'm sorry, I think that Brian did a great job, Joel too, of course, but Brian did a great job, and Lou summed it up well, I'm supportive of the project, I would leave it up to the zoning board in terms of the variance they're seeking, doesn't seem like a big deal to me, but I don't want to speak in favor or, you know, opposition to it. I do agree with, with Brian and Lou, that if you can move that one unit so that there's, you know, I understand what Joel's saying about the fact that there wouldn't be much impact there, but I encourage that discussion to continue between the Planning Department and the applicant, to make sure that we're not impacting that steep slope. I basically feel the same about the vegetation, the landscaping plan, I think that Brian had some great points, and I'm sure that he and the applicant work out a solution that would please everyone, so I'm supportive, I think there's a few details to tweak in otherwise a good application.
Very good, Kathy.
Um, well, I, I, I think this looks really nice, but I would recommend that unit 1B be merged with unit 1A, and then it would fulfill a criteria, at least for half of this, I think it would improve the chances of the variance for the multiple unit, you know, from the fourth special permit requirement, and it would also pull 1B away from that bluff edge where it's doing the most, you know, it has the most environmental impact on the, I, I would like to see the whole thing shifted to the east, you know, even unit 1C and 1D, if everything were shifted to the east a little bit, you wouldn't, you wouldn't become, Brian, is there any way to scroll this?
Sure, just tell me where you want.
Sure, just tell me where you want me to go.
Right over our screen, just so we could see that green wetlands line there. Because the proposed edge of clearing is right on that, you know, the, yeah, there we go, and maybe up a little bit because, sorry, I meant the other direction. Oh, this is, yeah. Anyhow, I just feel like the easternmost two buildings are really the ones that are, you know, causing the most difficulty for the environment there, you know, for the bluff and... I was married to a general contractor for 23 years, and I know that, you know, you can't pour a foundation with only, you know, that is definitely going to encroach on that bluff edge there. There's no question about that. So, and I think there, you know, there's something to be said to moving them just to the east and that 1B to the south some, as Lou recommended. I think they would go with, you know, I think that would really help their case. I think it looks nice the way it is, but I just think it's too challenging for the environment. You know, we've got nothing but erosion ahead of us. We've got nothing but long, you know, heavy rainfall and so forth, and I don't know what sort of bluff reinforcements they might propose for that edge there because it is very steep, even as, you know, with the proposed plan. So, you know, if they don't, if they can't see their way clear to moving it out of that, and even if they do, I think there should be some mitigation along that edge where the property is so steep. Regarding the meadows, I mean, you know, I think it's a practical matter. I'm sure there's no one on this board, maybe even on this meeting, that's not had lawn disease at one point in time. So, you know, you all can deal with your tiptoe as you choose to, but, and I like that the landscaping is, you know, I thank the applicant for including native plantings that, you know, will help to, you know, reinforce these landscaping bits. But I would like to see, especially on that walk that's leading down to the proposed stairwell to the, that's going to go down to the bluff, down to the lake. We haven't really discussed that at all. You know, I think there should be plantings and mitigation along there because, you know, that's, there's nothing but erosion ahead of you on that, nothing but erosion. So, and that stairwell is a natural conduit for stormwater runoff. I think there's an opportunity up there for some sort of plantings or, everyone gets sick of me saying the term permeable reactive barrier, or something like that, some sort of plantings or stormwater mitigation that would help with the water that is, you know, it's just a downward slope there. There's no, there's nothing to catch it besides the proposed lawn. And additionally, I can't remember if this is in the memo or not, I read it and I marked it up, but I recall, to limit, you know, any kinds of fertilizers or nitrogen-inducing, you know, lawn treatments that would, you know, further burden the health of the waters there in Fort Pon. So, that's a first view of that for me. I think it's a lovely concept, but I just think it should all be moved further east and further south, and I think you've got the room to do that. That's it, thanks.
Randy?
Randy?
Maybe he's not...
Can you hear me?
I'm here.
Ron?
Can you hear me?
Randy Parsons.
So, I have a couple of questions about the landscaping plan. So, I see there's a lot of red dashed lines around the unit. It says Unit 4. It looks like maybe a lawn area for each unit. Is that what that is?
Member Parsons, I think those are the footprints of the existing structures.
Oh, okay. Okay, thanks.
I'm going to go up to the legend of the landscaping plan if that's helpful.
So, this shows existing structures in a blue hatch. See, there's a, there's a lot of red, maybe the landscape architect could address, what is all that?
Yeah, this is, you got Alex here, LaGuardia Design Landscape Architect. So, all of those red dashed lines are the existing structures that are to be removed. There is no lawn at all around those structures as proposed. Currently, there's lawn, but it's all going to be, as we've been discussing, meadow, which we're going to be going back and taking another look at. But all of the dashed red lines, this is kind of a hybrid drawing that shows what was existing versus what's proposed, that everybody could understand what's changing on site.
Okay, so the legend shows a blue dash, but it's actually a red dash, right?
Yeah, I think that might have just been a printing error or maybe something with this transcript, but they are red on the drawings that were submitted.
Okay. So, you guys are proposing a switchgrass meadow. And I hear what Brian is saying, just wondering about maintaining a switchgrass meadow. What are you going to do about cedar trees volunteering? And I assume that your intention is to maintain it as a three-foot grass meadow, so you don't want, you're not going to want trees and all of that in there.
Yeah, that's correct. Actually, if Brian were to scroll up, there's a note at the bottom of the revegetation plant list that basically identifies that we would be doing ongoing, basically inspections on the property to remove invasives that happen to seed in from birds and from wind and things like that, especially mile a minute and some of the more aggressive invasives that are moving into Montauk. So, the idea would be that there is a maintenance, a long-term maintenance plan for the property to help prevent it from, you know, going in the wrong direction.
And then in the area closer to the water that you're calling out as lawn, what, that's proposed to be mowed switchgrass? Is that what you're...
Nope. So, the proposed lawn, that's the only mowed area. That would all be native red fescue, and we could certainly add a note that no fertilizer would be applied to that. Fescue doesn't really do well with fertilizer anyway, so that would all be a native turf-type grass that is mowed.
You're planning to irrigate it though, right?
Yes.
So, it would be irrigated and what kind of pest control are you thinking?
I don't think you would need any pest control, really, just irrigation and no fertilizer and let it do what it wants to do.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a nice plan. It looks, it looks good to me. Let's see, I wondered, I wondered about whether the applicant would consider, as some of the other board members said, would consider a scenic easement to protect that sort of swale on the north side. You don't have to answer right now, I'm just putting that out there. I do, I wonder about, as Lou raised as well, a six, in excess of 600 square foot basement. I'm wondering if, I'm not sure why, why do you want that much of a, why do you want that much of a, I assume that's going to be a poured floor and walls, and it would have your utilities in it, your heat, et cetera. But why would you want that much room? Could it be, could it be a half basement? That's a question.
Actually, on that regard, if you don't mind, are there basements on the property, the existing units right now? Applicant, Joel?
I don't believe so. Andy, no.
Cross bases or, what's it on, like cinder blocks or something?
On a slab.
On a slab, okay. Sorry, Randy.
Good question, Sam. And then that also goes to if these are going to be year-round. I don't know if they're seasonal now, but if they're going to be year-round, what sort of heating system are we talking about here and where is the fuel going to be stored? What type of fuel and where's it going to be stored? That question.
Important question, actually, is the year-round aspect of this. Does the applicant see any potential year-round moves on this?
And I guess... I would hope that we can get the architect on. I believe they are on the Zoom meeting. Can they be activated to speak, to address that issue? Andy, I'm just not...
Excuse me, Chair, this is Mike at LTV, if I may get their full name, please.
The architect?
Yes. Hi, good evening. It's Jonathan Sujak with Stell Lamont, Rahani Architects.
Okay. Yeah, Andy Hammer just suggested that you field the question about the year-round aspect and also the basement.
Sure. Well, with the basement, I mean, storage is always, always an asset, so, you know, if they have, if these are going to be furnished units and there's bad weather, you know, there's always the opportunity to store all the furniture down in the basement because the units are fairly small upstairs with a single bedroom and just a main living space. And then, you know, the basement also helps for the, as you're discussing, the HVAC aspect of it. So, any HVAC equipment, hot water tanks and so forth can be down in that basement as well. And then we can look into options. We can bring in a gas line, so then, you know, the fuel could be, you know, you don't have to have extra storage tanks outside if it's gas.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely prefer propane in a sensitive area if you can, I don't know if you can do a, if you can do a gas line, but not, you know, anything but stored petroleum fuel in that right there near the water and all that.
Yeah, certainly natural gas would be preferred, but if there's no gas main, we can look into locating propane tanks.
And so, you're thinking of the basement as really for storage and utilities?
Yeah. Once these units went from, you know, two stories in some cases down to one story, it really limits where we can put all of those things. Keeping the envelope small, the ceiling and floor structures are fairly small, so the basement is sort of the ideal place to house all of those things.
I have a quick question with respect to that. Is it the goal to make these year-round dwellings? And if so, well, that's a separate question. And then also with respect to the basement and the mechanicals being in the basement, you know, is it, is it an opportunity for a special groundwater protection policy to be employed here for any, you know, spills of any kind? I mean, it would depend, of course, as Randy's saying, on what the fuel source is for the HVAC, but, you know, I'm sure they'll be heated year-round or, you know, something like that, just to turn the water off. There are going to be basements here where there weren't before, so it seems like we should explore that.
I think that's a good idea to treat the basement floor. You know, we wouldn't want any leaching too. We're probably, I don't know what you're down to. If you're doing an eight-foot basement here, you're probably down to what, 15 feet to groundwater, something like that.
That's a big basement.
The size of the unit.
So, that, the idea of the scenic too, could, the easement could possibly include, as Kathy said, could include the waterfront, allowing for the staircase, but it just looks like, anyway, that's a thought on that. And I think, I think that's, that's pretty much it. I agree with my colleagues about, I think, and Brian's memo, I think in order to do the construction on 1B, you're going to have to start getting into that sloped area with the construction equipment and the unit. I guess you've got them all draining, it looks like you've got them all draining into one dry well, all the roofs going into that one dry well? Am I right about that? So, they'd all, all the drainage from the buildings would be going into a dry well?
I believe if you look at the plan, there's multiple dry wells. There was a drainage plan that was prepared and submitted. You'll see dry wells throughout the site. So, no, you couldn't pump uphill in any event, but, you know, that is on the drainage plans. But, you know, I think that would be easy enough to answer by review of the plan.
It's in the, I guess we don't, we don't have the drainage plan. See, Andy, in the, in the landscape plan, there's one dry well.
Yeah, this is, Randy, this is Alex, the landscape architect, again speaking. So, that dry well is a site dry well, and that's just specifically for handling the swale between the buildings. So, it's, that's specifically a landscape dry well as we are looking at the landscape revegetation drawing and not the grading and drainage plan.
Okay, so, we're going to, I know this isn't in the harbor protection overlay, but because it's right on Fort Pon Bay, any of those HPOD conditions like, you know, roofs into gutters and leaders into a dry well, you know, as much native revegetation as we can get, the separation, I think you're fine with separation from the bottom of your leaching system to There was one, oh, I know, previously our engineer recommended that wherever there's gravel used in the HPOD, and that would probably apply here, if possible, to use crushed quartz.
Right, that's right.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't chemically interact like bluestone and change the pH of the water going into the bay.
Weren't they talking about...
That's right.
They're calling it gravel, but I don't know what kind of gravel.
Yes, it would be the 3/8 crushed local bistry and gravel, most likely, because we like that, it's the local material, and for those exact reasons that you mentioned about not harming water quality and things like that. It'll likely also have a organic binder to it, which will help make it stabilized and not so loose.
Okay. You guys did a really, it's a beautiful job.
Thank you.
I don't know, Brian, do you, can we see the grading and drainage or...
I have the sanitary plans. I don't know how much grading detail is on them. I'll take a look, I'll see if I can get them.
Let me move over to Sharon, okay? Yep. Sharon?
Yeah, I mean, I think everybody has really presented all the questions that are looming on this project, but overall, just to say that I don't mind the four-unit layout if the variance is given. So, you know, that's really the biggest question at the moment, is this variance that is going to determine how these are laid out. And then, you know, pulling it away from that, I think that bluff is probably a good idea. And, you know, protecting the groundwater and obviously making sure that the ADA parking is in compliance and drainage. I mean, I think Randy and Kathy and everybody has brought up all the issues that are going to be coming up while we continue to review this application. But, you know, I think the variance needs to happen first in some ways, and then we can go from there.
It's one of the first questions we have to answer ourselves. It's one of the first questions we have to answer ourselves. Brian, can you do me a shout out? Do you have anything else? Is that it?
No, no, go ahead.
Brian, can you bring up that picture, the, the photograph of the current view of the site from the water? That one, yeah, that's the one. Um, I'll just express my opinion that I think that the new plan is an improvement.
Yes.
Useful thing to have that picture in front of us as we consider this application. So the first thing we need to do is, um, uh, uh, make a secret declaration and Lou, with your application, so you'd like to, uh, make a motion on that.
Yeah, I make a motion that we become the lead agency.
Is there a second? Second, we had that? All those in favor of declaring lead agency status?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, six, nothing on that, so.
Sam, just before you, so now that we, we do not have a town engineer and, uh, the grading and drainage plan on this site is important. That, that, uh, drainage plan that, uh, Brian just pulled up, I don't see, I don't see, uh, leaders and gutters going into dry wells on there, but I don't want to pretend to do, uh, grading and drainage review, you know, in a Zoom meeting. But it does bring up the issue that we don't have an engineer to review these plans. And this one is, you know, this one needs that review. I'm wondering if we can route this to our consulting engineer for comment.
Well-
Absolutely.
Sharon, uh, Joanne, that you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we can absolutely get comments from our, um, consulting engineer.
Okay, alright. Let, let's, let's go through the questions because they, they, they're all, they all are issues that folks raised. The first one is, do we want to send comments to the zoning board regarding the variance, uh, from the transient motel special permit standard?
Yes.
And I think we're all pretty i- 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 in agreement on that. And no, nobody objects to that, right?
I can't hear you, Sam.
I said, we're all pretty much in agreement that we should send comments to the ZBA, um, regarding the variance, um, uh, from the, uh, it's called the transient motel special permit standard.
Yeah, um, could you circulate the comments before we, uh, send them, just so we get a chance to review them?
Well, yeah, we have.
What?
We should have a little discussion about what the comments should be. That's, don't think?
Yeah, I just, I mean, generally, we, yeah.
Let me, let me start with Lou.
All the specifics.
It's, it's, let me, let me start with Lou because Lou, Lou, it's your application. Do you, what, how do you feel about the zoning?
Yeah, I, I feel, I feel strongly that, uh, we recommend that the variance be, be given, given, provided to the applicant. I just don't, you know, I don't see any reason either practical, aesthetic, or anything else why, uh, they should be made to connect these units in order to comply to that, uh, code section.
Does anybody, let me, thank you Lou. Does anybody disagree with that assessment? Any of the board members disagree with that assessment?
I don't know if we, I don't know if we should be recommending variances. I think we could say we have no objection.
Alright, I, I, I'm, I'm alright with that.
Yeah, I, I don't have an objection to the, to the, um, the individual units, but I wish they would move it away from the bluff, you know, that's.
But that's not the, the-
I understand, but, you know, I don't have any particular objection with the individual units, although I think they have an opportunity to merge two of them as one still units that would then, you know.
Will that all be before the ZBA?
Yeah, I understand, but I, but that's a consideration and to my mind, that would be included in, in a recommendation that I would make to the ZBA.
You know, Lou, like-
Ian and Sharon, do you have any strong feeling about the, uh, uh?
I, I'm in, I'm in agreement with Lou. I think I like the, you know, if they can get it away from the crest, both crest a little bit more, I, I don't mind the four unit, um, layout.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't mind it, but I, uh, like 95% of the time, I would just allow the zoning board to do their own work because they're, they're the professionals.
Right, but in terms of a comment, you have like no, uh, 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 no objection.
I would, I would say that I have no opinion, I, you know, in endorsement of the variance or, and I certainly don't have any objections, but I, I do worry that if we like the, the layout, it's actually just that we don't like what the code says, and I'm not sure, because the code says in this zoning area that, it, you know, they should be attached. I don't know why that's the case, but again, I would rather leave it to the zoning board to make up their own mind.
I, 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 I think that consensus is that we're somewhere between no objection and no opinion.
Hey, I, I have a question for Ian, just for my own edification, Ian. I'm not, uh, you know, I'm not challenging what you're saying. I just want to understand. Um, I, I thought that part of the process is that we can get, we can give an opinion to the zoning board on this particular issue or on an issue that goes to the zoning board, whether they, where they have to determine to give a variance or not.
Yeah.
That's part of our, our task is to give an opinion. Now, I hear you saying that by us giving an opinion, either yes or no, we are infringing upon the zoning board's, uh, job.
No, I don't think, I don't think infringing at, at all. I think it's our place, definitely. But I just reserve, you know, an opinion one way or the other to something that relates directly to planning. For example, if there's a planning reason why we want them to do something that would then require a variance, I would say, please grant this variance. It really helps with the plan. In this case, I think the reason to recommend for the variance is that we don't like what the code says in general, not because there's some unique thing on this property that wouldn't allow it to comply with the code. So I, I don't object to it whatsoever, but I don't think there's a planning reason why we'd recommend it in this particular case.
You know what, Lou, you might be able to do it by saying something, and this would be, we could work with Thomas on this. We're really saying, I think, that applying our, our site planning and special permit criteria in, you know, in the first look, that we think the detached layout meet is more, uh, meets our special permit and our site plan standards more than an attached unit would. So we could, that-
You know, but that's, but that's random. You do that, then, then we're, then we're getting into, you know, giving our, uh, opinion about the, the, something that is definitely the ZBA's purview. And I, and I take Ian's point that we should, you know, i- 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 be restrained, if you will.
I agree.
There will, there will always be a time where, where we will dictate that a project is laid out in a certain way that would necessitate a variance, in which case we should say we want them to grant that variance because it helps with some sort of planning element. In this case, I think we're just saying we prefer single units, and I, I, I don't know about that. I don't-
I, 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 I think that, 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 you know, where, I think we're doing the same, that the safest thing to do is, is, is the applicant is the one who's going to need the variance. So i- 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 to the extent that the ZBA cares or wants to hear from us, I think saying, you know, no objection gets us about as far as we ought to go with it.
I agree.
In this particular case, uh, you know, I mean, the-
I'm good with that. I'm, I'm good with that, Sam.
The applicant, the applicant is represented, thank you, the applicant is represented by, you know, very competent representatives who will be able to go to the ZBA and, uh, you know, hit the ball out of the park without our, uh, without our assistance, assuming that the ball is one that can get hit out of the park. So, it's-
So, you know, I agree, Sam, with everything you're saying. I think it's helpful for applicants to know that just in, in this informal discussion that, um, they're not going to go through the, the trouble of getting a variance and then come back to a, a board that thinks it's a terrible idea.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
That's really the point.
Yeah, and that is.
And it's exactly right.
And, 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 and a statement of no objection by us gets us, gets them.
Yeah, that's right. An affirmative statement of no objection, rather than sending no comments at all.
Yeah, no, no, no objection, no, no objection. Alright, does the planning board wish to require additional details regarding the extent of clearing and drainage that may be necessary in North Side of Unit 1B? I think we all agree to that.
Yes.
I think, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, does the planning board wish to require applicant to revise ADA parking space and verify compliance with ADA standards? Believe, I'm, I'm going to run through these because I'm sure everybody agrees. Does the planning board wish to obtain revised landscaping plan that amends the proposed clearing boundary and vegetation standards more consistent with the town code? And again, I'm sure that we're all on board with that. We declared lead agency. Should a lighting plan, which meets the exterior, meets the requirements of town code and planning board's guideline for exterior lighting be submitted? Think that goes without saying. And do we wish to send comments to the ARB at this time? Um.
Well, that goes, we, we haven't seen elevations.
Yeah, I agree with you, Randy.
Yeah.
But, yeah, let's hold on.
It would be nice for us to see elevations because in our special permit standards, even though it's the ARB's primary task, we have to be, be comfortable with the, uh, the way these things look, so.
Yeah, and, and you know, oh, well, yes, we do. And, but also, you know, uh, I mean, th- this is, and that, one of the reasons I wanted this picture up while we were having this discussion is that, that, you know, the, the applicant is proposing a, a, a substantial change to the, to the way this property is going to work. And, uh, in my opinion, uh, what I can see so far, for the better. Um, and I think that, uh, when we get, we get that, when we get it back from the ZBA, assuming we do, that, uh, you know, there'll be plenty of time to, uh, give suggestions to the ARB. So, we've been on this phone for over an hour, so let's, let's wrap it up and give the applicant and their many professionals the opportunity to go home. Anybody else have anything else on this? Here we go, now, we will now move to, I'm sorry, is that you, uh, Joel, was that you or Randy? I, I heard?
I, I would, I would just like to have a couple of closing comments. Uh, uh, one thing is about the basements. These units are limited by the county to be no larger than 600 square feet, so we can't legally finish the basement, and there's no intention to. I also wanted to say that a basement is, makes perfect sense when you're building any kind of occupied space. It's the way that you create a vapor barrier to provide a, you know, more comfortable, cool, energy efficient space. So, uh, I would ask the board to, absolutely, we're, we're going to look at your comments, but I think it makes the most sense to have this as a storage space. The other thing I wanted to strongly emphasize is what we have is a hill slope. It is not a bluff. We are outside of natural resource special permit jurisdiction, and as a matter of fact, that, that photo that's up right now shows just how a dramatic change to this site is being made. That's going to be, you know, much more compliant with the NRSP regulations as they stand. You know, this site is, is cleared, stemmed to stern largely, and it's been maintained like that for decades. Uh, we're really going to make a positive change here, and, and I think we can get, you know, revise the landscape plan. We'll, we'll have some meetings with Brian and talk it over, but I think everything we're doing here is going to be a positive. Uh, in terms of a grading and drainage plan, I will make sure that you have one that we can send to the, uh, the consulting engineer that will have calculations and everything on it. I just don't have the ability to open up what was submitted and verify it. Uh, and I did want to say that we did submit eight copies of the elevation, 10 copies of the elevations to the board's file, so you do have those. Uh, I would say that, you know, probably it's, it's not, it's a little premature to send comments to the ARB. We do have to go to the zoning board and get their, uh, uh, you know, the variance. They might actually ask for comments from the ARB, uh, because, you know, there is an aesthetic component of the four separate units versus attached units, uh, that we're going to be arguing in terms of community, uh, uh, you know, the community character. However, you know, that's up to the board to decide, but, you know, we, you do have elevations of these units in your file, and I urge you to look at them. They're beautiful, and I think that was the intent when we created them.
Thank you very much, Andy.
Andy, one quick question. You, aren't you going to need an NRSP for the stairs to the beach?
I believe that is the only thing on this property that is in NRSP jurisdiction. Uh, to, to one of the members' points, we are revegetating almost that entire, uh, you know, area. There's a little round circular point. That's the only place we're not revegetating is that little lawn that's going to be the red fescue native grasses, uh, that's kind of, you know, as you walk down. But most of that area is vegetated right now, and we're going to be adding a lot more vegetation. So yes, that bluff staircase does require an NRSP, uh, and we will certainly work with them to see if there's another way that they would like it oriented. Uh, you know, sometimes these things have, uh, uh, turn, you know, turns in them or landings, uh, but, you know, I do think the architect did a good job of designing this, uh, to meet the existing bluff, but, you know, obviously we'll discuss that with the zoning board when we get there.
Thanks very much.
I did also want to address that one, that the concern about the one, uh, unit, uh, what is it, 1B? That we have 14 square feet of deck that's between the two contour areas. It's a very tiny, uh, area of the property, and I think we can demonstrate that, you know, if we raise that up or put it on a helical pile, we're going to not require any grading or clearing of that area. We will take your comments to heart and see what can be done, but it is such a miniscule part of the overall application. It's largely a flat area and 14 square feet of that deck is in a hill slope. It's not a bluff. Uh, but we'll see what we can do and demonstrate to you that that's not going to have any environmental, uh, harm at all. As a matter of fact, you know, most of the environmental harm you'd be concerned about here, we're out of NRSP jurisdiction. So, you know, I think that, that speaks volumes about all the attention that was de- designed to, uh, uh, you know, create a better environment and a better project than what's currently been in existence there for decades. If not, I think it might be even from the 50s, very old. But, uh, in any event, we think this is, you know, I, I, I'm very, I want to thank the board because, you know, it seems like you share our optimism that this is a real great improvement to the site. And we think working with you guys, we can make it even better. So, uh, have, you know, happy and looking forward to working this through.
Well, we'll miss Bonzo's bungalows, but we look forward to what comes next.
Lou?
Thanks very much. Let's, let's, guys, let's wrap it up. Let's, let's move on to the next thing, please.
Lou's getting rid of more cesspools in my talk.
I know, I, well, you didn't say-
One by one, Randy, one by one.
Alright, we're going to move on now to the, uh, emergency communication facility at Springs Fireplace, uh, Springs Fire, oh, no, I'm sorry, Springs Fire Department's Site Plan Special Permit. Uh, do we have the applicant on the line?
Yes. Hey, hi guys.
Who's that?
Carl, Sarah.
Oh, is that you?
Alright.
Thanks very much. Okay, alright, um, Eric, this is yours, right?
Yes, um, can everyone hear me? I've been having technical difficulties. You can hear me, right?
Ron, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Maybe get a little closer to the mic.
I can't do that. Um, from the, from the way it's set up, I can't do that.
No, I meant, I meant Carl.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Okay. Alright, go ahead, go ahead, Eric, you're on.
Okay, I'm going to share screen now. Um, so, uh, at the last, um, time this was reviewed, the board, uh, decided to make a positive declaration. The planning department has prepared the EAF Parts Two and Three in accordance with that. I guess the board's mission for tonight is to go through this document, um, decide, uh, whether or not they feel that what we filled out, um, is appropriate, whether or not they think that things need to be added. Again, where any, um, uh, moderate to large impacts may occur, uh, was addressed, um, in greater length, not just checking a box, um, at the end of the document. Um, the main impacts really here are on aesthetic resources as well as on historic and archaeological resources. There are, um, two other areas, uh, that were checked. And, um, just to give you a bit of a summary, um, again, this is, uh, it's visible from a scenic area of statewide significance. Um, the visualizations that you received only included six locations, um, which does not, does not seem sufficient. Um, the, um, it did not include the, any of the properties in the Springs Historic District, which is very close by. Um, there's a question here about whether or not it'll be visible to routine travelers or recreational, um, visitors. Um, Springs Fireplace is a main arterial road, um, and it has a high traffic count. And there's a number of recreational and tourism activities based at Acabonic Harbor, um, kayaking, uh, canoes, paddle boards. Um, so it would be visible from there, we anticipate. Um, so as far as the historic and archaeological resources go, uh, the subject property is only 900 feet away from the boundary of the Springs, um, uh, the Springs Historic District. Um, this district contains 36 individual properties. Um, a number of these properties are listed on the National Register. Some have been indicated as eligible, uh, for it. Um, we'd like to see visualizations from those locations. Or I should say, we recommend that visual renderings be, uh, given from them. In particular, the Pollock Krasner House, which is the closest- In particular, the Pollock Krasner House, which is the closest, is on the National Register, has a big open lawn towards Akabonic Harbor. And it would be vital, I think, to the board's review to see whether or not the tower would be visible from any portion of that property. So I guess, impact on human health. Most of those questions are about contaminants, digging up contaminants in the soil, releasing contaminants for gaseous or otherwise, or solid. So this is not a personal wireless service facility again. However, if it was, we'd have to meet the fall zone requirements. And as, it's not scaled out, but as I see it, the two times the height fall zone requirement would include 24 adjacent residences. The one times height, which would be over the property line of another property, would be, there would be six residences impacted. That's a total of 30 variances if this was a wireless facility. Now, it's not, so that standard does not directly apply. But you still have the SECR question as to whether or not there's a negative impact on human health that would result from that, as well as your general site plan standards. So consistency with community character.
Eric, I'm going to go through them.
Yeah, well, I'm almost done, I'm almost done. So it, it could have a potential to, again, decrease the, the visual quality of surrounding resources, Ashwagon Hall, the scenic area of statewide significance at Akabonic Harbor. And the last part is whether or not the action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character. This is a 180-foot tall radio tower. There are no such structures nearby that are of that scale and character. So that's just giving you a brief summary of what I wrote. Those answers relate to the questions in the first, in the EAF Part Two, which, as you know, are boxes that are, that are checked. So I will let the chairman and the rest of the board go through this. I'll take notes, and any changes or additions that you want me to make, I'll, I'll take note of.
Thanks so much. The way we're going to do this is, I'm going to go through the EAF and where the planning board, so the planning department has indicated a yes on the category, then we will go through the five or six or however many there are sub-questions and see if the board all agrees on the level of impact. On the ones, which are really most of them, where the planning department has said that there's no impact, I'm not going to go through the questions, but every member, if they wish to, can take that particular category and say, you know, whether they think that it should in fact be a yes. And we can go through whatever particular questions are within that category. But the ones that we'll be covering, going through ourselves, are number one impact, for sure, are number one impact of land. Number, sorry, number 11, impact on open space. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my error, not, not number 11. 16, impact on human health. 17, consistency with community plans. And 18, consistency with community character. But before we do that, I want to give the applicant an opportunity to, you know, say, say a few words because I don't want this to just be, you know, without your input, you are here. So if you want to say anything, Carl, please, the floor is yours.
Thank you. At this stage, I think we're just looking forward to hearing the feedback from the board. If there's anything, if there's anything I feel I need to chime in on, I'll, I'll let you know.
Well, when we're going through it, it's going to be just the board. So, you know, you might want to hold that off for the end. One other thing I will say, and it is very important, the, because Eric was just mentioning it. There are very detailed comments on the areas. I should add, I think I left out impact on aesthetic resource. But anyway, there are very detailed comments by the planning department with respect to those areas where there is an impact. And to the extent that the applicant's going to be addressing the, these areas that are in this EAF, they, they need to really read through and understand these concerns. And like I say, it's a very, very specific, very detailed set of comments that we have. It's not just, you know, low, moderate, you know, high impact, check a box.
Well, Sam, we're going, we'll do a scoping outline where, you know, where we can get down to brass tacks.
Right, but that, that also raises another point, and that, thank you, Randy, because it's actually the next thing I was going to say. In the event that there is an EIS, that EIS is going to be based, the scoping of it is going to be based on the EAF that we're about to do. So it's very important that the applicant understand, you know, that these are our areas of concern and with respect to the planning department's comments, why there are areas of concern. So with, with that, let me go, I presume we all have Part Two in front of us. Impact on land, now.
Just Chairman Kramer, just before you start, I mean, one of the things you just mentioned was, sorry, I know I said I wasn't going to say anything, but thanks for indulging me just for a moment.
All right, go ahead.
The, and if you want, we'll be happy to provide additional visualizations if, you know, if that's the big issue and we could try to, you know, keep this from entering a different procedural stage at this point by offering some visualizations to try to resolve that, short of going down a deeper, darker road. We'd be happy to do that, so.
Well, I mean, I, I, let me go through this because there are, it's more than just visualizations, I think, as you'll see as we go through it. But let's, let's, we'll bear that in mind. All right, so number one is impact on land, which the planning department says yes. But all six items are listed as no or small impact may occur. I'm going to read those items, and I'll stop at the end of the sentence. And if anybody thinks that that should be moderate to large impact, chime in and we could, you know, have a quick discussion about that. Number one, the proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet. Nothing. The proposed action may involve construction on slopes of 15% or greater. The proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface. The proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. The proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including treatment by herbicides. And finally, the proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area. All right, so I hadn't, I didn't hear anybody interrupting on that, chiming in, I should say. So all those will remain as low to moderate, I'm sorry, no or small impact.
Sam, I'm sorry, I didn't unmute adequately.
Which one?
So, the, the question that I have going through all of this, and it really comes up in item 17, but because we have in our record a statement by the cell phone, by the tower builder and the cell phone company, that what they would like to do here is have, and the reason that they're making the investment in the permits and in the construction of the tower is that they, they would really like to have cell service on this facility. So we know, we know that that is no small part of this application.
Does that, does that relate to any of these?
Well, so it doesn't really, except the proposed action may involve construction. No, I, I think, I think we get to it later.
All right, let's hold off on it then.
Okay.
Because when we get to that, to category 17, we'll probably have, you know, a more wide ranging discussion. So although I, I do agree with you, Randy, that we might think about whether the proposed action continues for more than a year or in multiple phases. That, that, well, I don't think they're proposing to do construction in multiple phases. I think that they're talking about populating out the tower in multiple phases. I think the construction itself is a single piece of construction. So, all right, let, let me move on to, all right, so we have, next is impact on geological features. And again, that's a no. If anybody has anything they want to say anything about that, please say so. No, okay. In that case, next, we'll move on to impacts on surface water. Also, a no. Does anybody have anything they want to invest, go into a little more deeply on that? No, all right. Next, impact on groundwater. Another no. Nobody has anything they want to answer that?
Well, Sam, I have a question if, if the, the tower, so again, we have the tower as proposed for emergency services, and then we have the testimony that there may be a second phase. There's likely to be a second phase where cell phone antennas come in for approvals. It raises that whole question of the backup generator and the fuel. Is a backup generator necessary for the tower as it's proposed now? We know it is for a cell tower. And, and what type of fuel? That's the only groundwater thing I can see that could come up.
Yeah, but it's not before us yet.
Right, but couldn't that be under other impacts, under this impact on groundwater? Isn't that where we are, number four?
Yeah, we're in number four right now, yes.
So, but Randy's point, because I agree with him on this, is, you know, it may require storage of petroleum or chemical products over groundwater. You know, there are other impacts. We can elaborate to include other impacts that aren't specifically designated within this category.
Let me ask Thomas a question.
As Randy articulated, I think it's useful.
Thomas, are we getting ahead of ourselves with that?
Yeah, I think that's a little thin. I mean, I don't, you know, I just, you're talking about the, you know, I, I don't know, I just, I, I think that's getting ahead of us a little bit.
Do we have, as part of the current application, do we have a request for an emergency generator?
No, there's an existing generator on site. You can see on the, on the plan, hopefully, that there's a existing 300-gallon diesel tank for, for the generator.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so we can keep going.
Sam, can I, can I say something quickly?
Please, please, please.
You know, I, I, I'm not going to vote for this document. I don't think we should make a positive declaration, so I'm probably not going to speak to many of these points. But I, I don't think we as a board should go through to look for things in this document to back up a position, which is, we don't want the tower. I think that there are, I think there are things within our own standards that are already apparent, whether we like the tower or we don't, based on the height, the neighborhood. There are plenty of reasons, I think, within our code. I, I don't think it's appropriate for us to posdeck it because I think that we have the information we need. I'm not sure what new information is going to come to light to show us, you know, about true environmental impacts here. And so I think that there would be a way to not posdeck this and still deny the application based on our own standards in the code. And so I'm only saying that now because typically, we wouldn't posdeck a cell tower or another generator based on groundwater issues. So I just, I'm saying it now because it's the first time something has come up that I disagree with. But I'm not going to nitpick the points because I won't vote for a positive declaration. And I just want to make it clear that in doing, in saying this, I'm not saying that the tower should be approved, though I think there's arguments for it. I just don't know what good would come of, frankly, I think it's a waste of time and money if we know why we don't like the tower and whatever studies come about, I don't think we're going to change that. And I don't think that we should put them through that process.
I, I, I want to, I, I, I want to keep going with this.
Fair enough.
As to the, and I, I don't mean to, to, to cut off or even disagree with what you're saying. What I do think is that there's, there are a lot of issues that are already, get, get, get a yes from the planning department. I don't think we need to, you know, unless it's something that's really clear and, and current, which is my problem with talking about what might come down the road. That, I don't think that's appropriate for us to, to, you know, identify that as an issue for the EAF. Let me keep going, guys.
I want to say that I'm not going to argue with other points that I'm going to disagree with for the reason that I'm not going to vote for a posdeck, so.
Okay, so then we'll, we'll know that going forward.
Yep.
One comment on Ian's, one comment on Ian's thing is, one of the main thrusts of EIS is, is to identify and analyze alternatives. And I think that's one of the key things that we want to do here. And so that, he kind of, he left that out.
I don't think this is about the groundwater. I, I thought we were having this discussion, you know, relevant to item four, impact on groundwater, regardless of whether one will vote for or against a posdeck.
I think, I think he was just prefacing that, that point. Let me, guys, let me, let me keep going with this, please, because we got, we haven't hit the ones that are yeses yet. Impact on flooding? Anyone? No. Impact on air? Anyone? No. Impact on plants and animals? Anyone? No. Impact on agricultural resources? Anyone? No. Okay, now we can go. Number nine, I'm going to go through each one of these. Impact on aesthetic resources. Proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource. And that gets moderate to large impact may occur. Is there anyone who disagrees with that? All right, number two. The proposed action may result in obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views. And the planning department identifies that as no or small impact may occur. Okay, continue. The proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points seasonally screened by summer foliage but visible during other seasons or year round. That list says no or small impact may occur. I'm wondering.
I'm, I thought about this one while I was spilling it out. The key word in here is vantage points. So that's something high. You know what I mean? That's like if you were talking about the, the overlooks on, you know, by Hither Hills there. You know, I, I looked into this to see whether or not it just meant you can see it from someplace that's, you know, that's scenic. But the idea here is that if you're up at a high vantage point, you're going to look down and you're going to see this, and it's going to obscure, you know, it's going to degrade that vista. That, that's what this question means.
And, and, and that definition of vantage points, that's something that's in case law or in the, in the, in the code, in the, in SECR?
I mean, I, yeah, I couldn't, it's not in SECR. I'm sure there probably is something in case law. But I, you know, I Googled it and looked at different things, but also, that's what that word means, vantage. You know what I mean?
All right.
Vantage, it means it's something that's higher than something else. But the issue, the issue of whether or not it's visible from scenic areas or has an impact on scenic resources is addressed in the other, the other.
Yeah, well, we, we're about to get there. So, is, is everybody on board with that being a no or small impact as explained by Eric?
I, Sam, I, I, I hear what Eric's saying. I think we really need to, we need to drill down into the word vantage points because I would interpret, like, for example, this tower would be visible from. this tower would be visible from Laos Point and Gerard Point, which are.
Which is the opposite of a vantage point, it's below it.
Well, okay, well, I just.
I'm, I'm, I'll let you go, I'm sorry, I'm just saying.
No, no, Eric, I, I hear you. And if we get it, if we pick it up somewhere else, that's fine.
I think we do, I, I had, Randy, I had the same concern. Uh, from Akabana Harbor. And I just, you know, um, but, but, but I think we are going to pick it up. The situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is, one, routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work. That gets a moderate to large impact. And then recreational or tourism based activities. And that gets, um, a moderate to large impact. That addresses my own question, which was from the, from Akabana Harbor. You know, somebody on a kayak, for example. Um, so, uh, I, I, I don't believe anybody's disputing that. It's a moderate to large. If you are, please say so. No one, okay? All right, next is the proposed action may cause a diminishment of public enjoyment and appreciation of the designated aesthetic resource. That gets a moderate to large impact. And I presume we all agree with that. Okay? Next is there are similar projects visible within the following distances of the proposed project. And then it breaks out between zero and five miles. And it says no or small impact. Eric, are there no other towers?
Yes, like check the distance of the Cable Vision Tower at the corner of Abraham's Path and, um, Springs Fire Police Road, as well as the, um, two towers at the landfill. Uh, they're, they're greater than that distance.
Okay. All right, anybody else on any of those? We're all in agreement?
Eric, that's, they're more than five miles?
Yeah, I mean, I, I checked, um, I can double check, but, um, uh, as I, I, I went over that because I wanted to make sure. I'm, I'm pretty confident that it's been five miles.
Okay.
Next, next is, um, the, uh, impact on historical and archaeological resources. Uh, number one, and that, that's a yes. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any buildings, archaeological site, or district which is listed on or has been nominated by the New York State Board of Historic Preservation for inclusion on the state or national register of historic places. And that gets a yes. Uh, it's a moderate to large impact may occur. I presume we're talking about the Pollock-Krasner House there?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the proposal, any, any objection on that, folks? No, okay. Proposed action may occur wholly or within or substantially contiguous to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office, Archaeological Site Inventory. Eric, you have that also as moderate to large impact? You want to, is that, is that referenced in your notes?
Yes, absolutely.
Which one is?
I'm sorry, we're on, um, I was trying to double check the, uh, the distance measurement there.
Um, actually, no, I just read number B. I read ten B just now. And you have, oh, okay, very good. So, um, you, 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 you have, um, within an area that's been designated, all right, as sensitive. Okay, got any objection to that? And then, um, there's a, I guess a third category of E. If any of the above are answered, moderate to large. Continue with the following questions to help support conclusion. Uh, the proposed action may result in the destruction or alteration or of part of the site or part of the site or property. You have a, a no or small impact on that. But then you get to, um, the proposed action may result in the alteration of the property setting or integrity. And there you have moderate to large impact. And I don't hear anyone disagreeing with that. The proposed action may result in the introduction of visual elements, which are out of character with the site or property or may alter its setting. And again, you have, uh, indicated, uh, moderate to large impacts.
Hey, Sam, my question, we know that, uh, and Eric brought this out in terms of, um, visual analysis, that this is, uh, near the Springs Historic District. Just wondering if any of these, uh, are we going to pick up potential impacts on the Springs Historic District? In any of these, maybe it was the ar- historic and archaeological, uh, historic and archaeological resources. I, you, you could say that it's substantially contiguous to a district. Um, that, that would be ten A. Oh, you have it, sorry. You have moderate. It does, but that, and then Sam, you mentioned Krasner Pollock, but I would say that includes the entire Springs Historic District too.
I, I, I agree, I'm just thinking that the Pollock-Krasner is a national, it's, it's the Department of the Interior, uh, specific.
Okay.
It's a national landmark, yes.
Yeah, that's why it's on, on my mind.
And in, in the body of the responses, um, I do mention that the, um, uh, Springs Historic District has thirty six properties, uh, many of them, um, ranking for, um, well, two of them, I think, uh, on the national register, um, one eligible, um, two, it's sort of undetermined. Um, but we don't have visualizations from any of those properties. Um, I specifically put that in there, um, really to not only identify the problem, but sort of guide, um, both the applicants and the board as to what might be included, um, in the scope as far as additional information that you might want, um, to, to garner, um, you know, to get an idea of what the impact on the historic district and the individual properties in it may be.
Yeah, that's great, Eric, really, good stuff.
Okay, good. All right, next is, oh, impact on open space and recreation. That's a no. Um, next is impact on critical environmental areas. A no. Um, next is impact on transportation, a no. Uh, again, if anybody has anything, please say so. Number fourteen, impact on energy, that's a no. Number fifteen, impact on noise, odor, light and light. Uh, and again, a no. Um, now we move on to impact on human health. Um, that gets a yes. All of these, except for the last one, which is an other, which I will read out. All of these, um, are minor, uh, no, no, I'm sorry, no or small impact. And, um, if anybody wants to suggest that they be moved to moderate or large, please cut me off after, after I read the sentence. Uh, number A, the proposed action is located within fifteen hundred feet of a school, hospital license, daycare center, group home, nursing home, or retirement community. Next, the site of the proposed action is currently undergoing remediation. Next, there is a completed emergency spill remediation or a completed environmental site remediation on or adjacent to the site of the proposed action. Next, the site of the action is subject to an institutional control limiting the use of property, for example, easement or deed restriction. Next, the proposed action may affect institutional control measures that were put in place to ensure that the site remains protective of the environmental and human health. Next, the proposed action has adequate control measures in place to ensure that future generation treatment and/or disposal of hazardous waste will be protective of the human, of the environmental and human health. Next, the proposed action involves construction or modification of a solid waste management facility. Next, next, the proposed action may result in the unearthing of solid or hazardous waste. Next, the proposed action may result in an increase in the weight of disposal or processing of solid waste. Next, the proposed action may result in excavation or other disturbance within two thousand feet of a site used for the disposal of solid or hazardous waste. Next, the proposed action may result in the migration of explosive gases from a landfill site to adjacent offsite structures. Next, the proposed action may result in the release of contaminated leachy from the project site. Next, and this is the one that gets a, uh, moderate to large impact. Uh, and it's an other impact. Proposed action may impact the health and safety of adjacent residents. And that gets moderate to large impact.
And I, I can explain, um, briefly where that comes from. Um, basically, they're not beholden to, and I mentioned it earlier, they're not beholden to the fall zone standards of a wireless facility, uh, in the sense that a variance is needed. However, you do have, again, twenty four individual residences that are within two times the height of the tower. Um, the, that regulation is designed to protect the, the health and safety of those residents uh, from falling debris. And then additionally, there are six, uh, residential properties. Um, I shouldn't say residential, I think one of them is commercial. Um, but there are six individual properties that are within the fall zone, the direct fall zone of the tower, um, their property lines. So I, even though this project does not need to meet those special permit standards, there's still an, an issue here with whether or not it's going to have an impact on the health and safety of those neighboring residences.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. You know, at the, at the risk of extending a very long process here, but I, I really need to ask Ian a question at this point. Based on that, what Eric just said, Ian, that this particular, uh, parameter or criteria fits within the, uh, SECR review, but does not meet the, um, qualification of a special permit under the code. Doesn't that argue against the position that you stated earlier?
Um, per, perhaps it does. Uh, I, you know, honestly, I was, I, I, I don't, I read through the document carefully. I don't think, I think that the reasons that, that this will be denied do exist in our, in our code. And I'm, I'm hesitant to put somebody through a process of doing a lot more, you know, doing a, a huge study and spending a lot more money if it won't change the outcome. And I don't think that, I don't think that we need further review here. Um, so I'm, I'm hesitant to make them go through that process. But I think that our code gives ample opportunity to deny this if, uh, you know, we oppose the application.
What about the visualizations that the applicants indicated they're willing to do?
Well, they would do, they could do that outside the secret process. So I, again.
I understand, I understand, I mean.
Yeah, I would, I would welcome it. And I think that honestly, I think that the, the two things that, that people object to here primarily are the visualization and the, the residential neighborhood. And I think those things are clearly addressed in our code. And, and, and the height, obviously.
Okay, all right, let me, let me, let me go because we have the two more, we have two more categories, which are both yeses. Number one is, and again, these are all my, uh, no or small impact may occur. Again, interrupt me if anyone wants to talk about bringing these up to moderate or large impact. This is, this is consistency with community plans. A, the proposed actions land use components may be different from or in short contrast. Two, in current surrounding land use patterns.
I, I think, I think that's a moderate to large impact.
Does anybody else agree with that? I, I do.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's three. Anybody else agree that that's a moderate to large impact? Only the three of us, so we'll stay as is. All right, the next, the project will, the product, the proposed action will cause the permanent population in the city, town, or village which a project is located to grow by more than five percent. That's a no. The proposed action is inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations. Next is the proposed action is inconsistent with any county plans or other regional land use plans.
Sam, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't see how the, I, I didn't, we didn't hear from Sharon, but I don't see how you could say that, um, that a one hundred and eighty five foot tower in a predominantly residential zone is not in sharp contrast to current surrounding land use.
All right, let me, uh, Randy, fair enough, Randy, let me back up. Sharon and Ian, uh, well, Ian, I think I, actually, let me get the three who didn't chime in.
Sorry, I didn't chime, I was muted, but, um, no, I think that's, I think that could be, uh, large to moderate.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, and you know, Randy, it, try, maybe I don't understand it uh, as well as I should. So can you just explain your reasoning there? So I can make a better informed decision?
Well, I would say generally, a one hundred and eighty five foot tower is a commercial or industrial, uh, land use. And that, um, in, in Springs, um, there, there really is no, there is no industrial zoning in Springs. Uh, there is the fire department there, which is a community facility, but, and there's some low intensity, uh, retail, like, um, you know, shops, low, low intensity shops. But the predominant land use around there is uh, residential and some agriculture and preserved parkland.
So I know, but don't, don't these towers, aren't these, I mean, this, a tower is different than, you know, other land uses. And the, in my eyes, the difference is that they could go anywhere. I mean, I know that there are restrictions as to, you know, specific areas. But it's not as though cell towers or communications towers are, uh, are not allowed in any type of area. And I do understand there's, there's, uh, zones that are advantageous and those zones that are discouraged. But my point is that they could be put up anywhere. If, if it meets certain criteria.
I hear you, but I think, I think what the, what we're supposed to be making a call on is simply whether or not the proposed tower is different from, quote, is it different from or in sharp contrast to current surrounding land use patterns? Not, not whether they, ours are.
We have to cut this off, Randy, Randy, we have to cut this off, all right? I don't mean to be obnoxious, but we, we, you know.
All right, I vote, I vote, I vote that it stays as is.
All right, but we have four, so, but we have Sharon, you voted to change it, right?
Yes.
And, and Ian, I, uh, I don't want to speak for you, but I'm presuming you say keep it?
Yeah, I want to keep it, but honestly, I'm going to vote against the document, so I don't want to nitpick a huge point.
All right, so, but right now you've got four people saying change it. So this one can now change. Thank you, Sharon, I'm sorry if I jumped past the on that.
No, that's all right.
You can, all right, let me, let me run through the rest of these, please. Um, again, stop me only if you want to move it up. Um, that was up to E. Proposed action may cause a change in the density of development that is not supported by existing infrastructure or is distant from existing infrastructure. Next is the proposed action is located in an area characterized by low density development that will require new or expanded public infrastructure. And last is the proposed action may induce secondary development impact, e.g., residential or commercial development not included in the proposed action. All right, fine.
Yes. Yes, well, we have, this is where that.
This is where the, the additional tower comes in or the additional antennas come in?
We have the cell company who's spending, we don't know how many tens of thousands of dollars for this permit application and to construct the tower on, on the hope that they'll be able to re, get a return on their investment.
And Randy, I'm relying on the word commercial development in that, and, uh, I agree with you. Does anybody else agree that this should go from my, no or small impact to moderate or large impact?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Sharon, uh, so that's five.
Yes, to large. Mm-hmm.
Ian, you're a.
I don't agree, no.
You don't agree, all right, so that one gets changed also. Five to one. Okay, very good. All right, next one is, uh, eighteen, consistency with community chara-, oh, and, uh, um, Eric, you might want to make a note on that particular one.
Already have.
All right, thanks very much. Um, and finally, uh, consistency with community character, that gets a yes. Um, I'll, I'll read them because there's three that are small, then two that are moderate, and then one that's small. Uh, the first three is small. The proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facilities, structures, or areas of historic importance to the. or areas of historic importance to the community. Next, the proposed action may create a demand for additional community services, school, police, and fire. Next, the proposed action may displace affordable or low-income housing in an area where there is a shortage of housing. Next, the next two are listed as moderate. They're moderate to large. The proposed action may interfere with the user enjoyment of officially officially recognized or designated public resources. And that's kind of moderate to large. The proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character. And again, that's kind of moderate to large. And then finally, finally, is the proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape. And you have that as no or small impact. Does anyone think that that should go and be moved up to moderate to large?
It sort of depends on what we consider the existing natural.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Is it on site or does it go all the way to Akabonic Harbor?
Yeah.
See, I'm kind of on board with moderate to large. Eric? Why are we keeping that one as no or small impact?
Well, I think what you're looking at here is the natural landscape is the key term here. I think really you're, and keep in mind, I mean, these questions are not worded to be specific to.
No, they're not.
So I think it's whether or not something is going to have a significant damage on a natural area. You know, this is in the middle of, it is in an NV zoning district. It's in a residential neighborhood. So I don't know that that applies so much. I think that you address the issue of impacts on natural landscapes that we protected in the other questions where you're talking about Akabonic Harbor and things like that. I don't think this is the same as, you know, plopping a, you know, a factory or some large building in the middle of, you know, an scenic area of beauty that demeans the natural landscape. I don't think that's the spirit of this question. And I think that if you were going to answer it based on saying that it demeans the quality of the natural resources, the natural visual resources and natural resources in general of Akabonic Harbor and other areas nearby, you've already, you've already asked that question.
Yeah, we've covered it. I think you're right. All right. All right, so with that, Eric, where do we go now? Are we, you'll now assemble something and?
Yeah. I suppose, well, at the upcoming meeting, we have a couple of minor applications, wrap-up demos essentially, but one large application. This I can amend as the board only made a couple of amendments here. I noted them. I'll amend the document and then. Yeah, Thomas, if you want.
Yeah, I think we can just adopt it as amended tonight. I mean, we not just do that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right. I guess, Thomas, that should have been directed to you, that question, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was thinking of logistically, what are we doing? All right, so what do we need to have? This is Lou's application. So what do we need Lou to make a motion to adopt the EAF as amended?
Yeah, I make a motion to adopt as amended.
There's second. Second. All those in favor, all right. All those in favor of adopting the EAF as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed?
Okay, five to one on, yeah, five to one on that. The document. Okay.
Sam, don't we, aren't we going to make the positive deck tonight or?
Didn't we do that?
I don't think so.
Yeah. Oh, the positive, I'm sorry, I might bring, I thought you said we need eight gifts. Well, all right, the question now is the positive.
Okay.
Thomas, do we do that now?
Sure, I mean, Eric, do you disagree with that?
No, not at all. I mean, but I thought effectively by them adopting the EAF with a positive declaration, I don't know that they need to go through the formality of saying.
You tell me, you know.
You should formally make a positive declaration.
Couldn't hurt. In that case, Lou, you have the honors.
To be safe than sorry, I make a motion to positively this declaration.
There's second.
Second.
All those in favor of positively decking this application?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, aye. All those opposed?
Opposed?
Again, five to one. Okay. All right, now, do we need to do anything else at this point?
No, I don't think so.
All right. In that case, we can move on to the next application. Well, actually, before I, before I, I'm going to step back. Carl, you still there?
I am, thank you. Thanks for your feedback tonight, and we look forward to seeing you during the next stage.
Okay, great.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Good, all right, nice to see everyone, thanks.
Likewise. All right, folks, I'm going to be accused on the next application. You're in Kathy's capable hands.
So just on the, just the follow-up on Springs. So I don't know technically exactly what the next step is, but the development of the scoping outline, I'm sure we'll all want to be involved in that. And Eric, I think Eric actually has a pretty good outline from tonight's discussion.
Okay, the applicant's off the line. Let's, let's move on to the next, like, you know, the applicant's left, so.
I'm going. Call me when you're done, folks.
I'll just, I'll just note that we didn't discuss the, what alternatives we might like to be considered in the environmental impact statement.
We're not there yet.
And that needs to be part of the scoping outline.
Yep, and you'll have a chance to review that.
Okay.
Okay, so let's get on with Frank. This is better known as One Stop. Fabiha has taken this over for Eric. Eric prepared the memo, but Fabiha is going to be presenting tonight.
Is the applicant on the line?
Yes, Shannon McCaffrey and Susan Brierly are here.
Great.
All right, thank you.
And Susan. Okay, let's go. Fabiha, you ready?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, board members. So this is a follow-up review of Frank 291 Springs Fire Place Road. As you all may remember, this application has been made to replace and make addition to an existing wood retaining wall and includes changing the material to concrete. The applicant has submitted a revised site plan and revegetation plan based on previous board's comments and determination has been made by council regarding the scenic easement issue as discussed in the last meeting. So regarding the fence, as requested by board in the last review, the notation for four-feet-tall fence on the site plan has been amended as split rail with wear mesh weave. And also, at the last meeting, the planning board were concerned regarding the setback from the, of the fence from the retaining wall, if it meets the building code's requirements, and also had a concern regarding safety issue of the retaining wall. Planning Department spoke with Principal Building Inspector about the, about the wall, about the four feet setback from the split rail fence and the retaining wall if it meets applicable building code. It was her opinion that the currently proposed fence setback from the retaining wall is allowable. Further information was requested regarding the safety issue. The Office of Fire Prevention stated that no additional review was required by later dated July 6, 2020. Now, there was a big discussion in the last meeting regarding the existing nature of narrow strip of scenic easement that covers the narrow, sorry, nature of use of the area of scenic easement that covers the narrow strip of land in front of the building along Springs Fire Place Road. The board stated at the time of last review that it would defer to council to determine if the existing use is acceptable. Attorney for the Planning Board, Thomas Crouch, prepared a memorandum on this, on this resolution of this issue where first it stated that the planning board is provided with authority to examine the easement according to the site plan standards of the Town Code It states that the board must ensure that any proposed site plan comply with applicable existing agricultural, scenic, and conservation easements. Given the apparent ambiguity in the language of scenic easement as was discussed in the previous meeting, and also the nature and state of the property, it is council's recommendation that the planning board should require removal of picnic tables under the provision of the scenic easement that do not allow structures or public use. But otherwise, read the scenic easement to allow the improved trees, grass, and shrubs as the property has currently. Also, the landscaping plan has been amended to indicate the height of the proposed shrubs and trees in feet as requested by the board. It appears that the application will ultimately meet the standards to be considered as a minor site plan as per section 255-645 of the Town Code. Pending the resolution of the aforementioned issues, the board should form a consensus on whether or not to require a public hearing. So in conclusion, the board should determine, should make a determination on the scenic easement issue and see if additional information is required at this time regarding the setback of the fence or the safety issue of the retaining wall. After that, the application should be complete and then the board should, also now the board should form a consensus on whether or not to require a public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Fabiha. Shannon and Susan, do you have anything, would you like to address the board?
Thank you, this is Susan. We're happy to remove the picnic tables from the scenic easement. They should not be there. We completely agree with that, so that's not an issue for us. We'll advise our client of that. We did do a bit of research on the requirements for guardrails and safety procedures in this situation. And it appears that the International Building Code that the State of New York and the Town of East Hampton referred to, this does not actually qualify within the definition for requiring such a safety rail or a fence. So there's no parameters for anybody to kind of make a determination except through our own common sense. So, you know, that's, I think, where we're at and where we were at several months ago when we first discussed this, which is how we ended up with, you know, the split rail fence and the wire the outside. We were, we were looking at pool enclosure. You know, what was the parameters that we would employ for people walking along a pool enclosure? We didn't want them to climb the fence, which is how we came to this. We did talk to Anne Glennon today, and she was a bit confused about what she was being asked to interpret because again, there's, there's no basis for her to make an interpretation other than, like I said, common sense. So we would ask the board now, I think we fulfilled all the requirements and presented you with all the information you need. So we're really hoping tonight that we can deem this complete. We're hoping the board will waive the public hearing requirements and we can move forward.
Susan, could you just explain why it is that you are, what section of the code, the New York State Building Code that you're referring to that says that there's no, no basis for requiring a fence?
It's the International Building Code, not the New York State Building Code. So it's International Building Code. Section 1015.2, where required, yards shall be located along open standing walkway surfaces, including mezzanines, equipment platforms, aisles, stairs, ramps, and landings that are located more than 30 inches measured vertically from the floor or grade below any point within 36 inches horizontally to the edge of the open side. Guardrails shall be adequate in strength and attachment. So this isn't a designated walkway. This isn't an area that invites the public. So it doesn't fall within the definition of where the building department or the fire marshal would regulate it. So that's why we're interpreting it that way. We actually did meet with the fire marshal about a year ago to discuss this, and he agreed that we weren't required to put a rail on top of this wall.
Can you just submit a copy of that to the file for us?
We did this afternoon, you should all have it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do you have anything else to add?
Yes, I did. You know, I just, I wanted to forward tonight simply because, you know, given our current circumstances, this site has been open and left in disarray for a while. And with the COVID and everything that's going on, they've been serving the community one-stop quite successfully, actually. And it's becoming a problem for them because the back area of this is where the deliveries come in, and it's a bit jumbled at the moment. They're having a hard time with all the traffic and the people. So if we could get this done, it would be great that they could resolve their issues and provide a safer site for their tenants.
Right, I understand. Does anybody have any questions for Fabiha or the applicant? Okay, in Ed's absence, because he's away on vacation, I'm going to take over this discussion. Excuse me. So just, so I'm clear. You are, you are still proposing the split rail fence along the western boundary there, right? That's still a proposal with the landscaping and so forth.
That is correct. We're not going to take the fence away. It's a split fence with wire backing and then.
Right, you're fading out a tiny bit, Susan, I'm sorry to say. But I understand you to say you're going to keep the fence and the plantings as originally, as we had kind of developed to this point, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Okay, so I also spoke with Anne Glennon about this. I mean, I think one of the biggest concerns that some of my colleagues had, and I sympathize with that, were those footpaths that, you know, come down into the southerly, there are two of them that come down into the southerly portion. But I think at this point, if it's private property, we originally asked the applicant if they would consider putting stairs in there, and they were unwilling to do that. So I just want to reiterate that request. But I do think that with respect to access and, you know, the public's use of that western boundary to access the market, I think that the, you know, the present, the, I have, I spoke with Anne Glennon and she, I think we all agree basically, and Susan, I think this will echo your comments, that this is a common sense approach. We've done what we can in terms of due diligence to make this as safe as possible, given that it is not a public walkway, even though people access, access the property, you know, I guess one might say illegally at this point, but it's a habitual path down in there, and they'll just have to walk around now. But I think our, we've met our due diligence in terms of safety and any concerns that the board had with respect to the four-foot-high fence and then plantings and then some level ground beyond that, then the drop, especially in the northern edge of the property where the, the wall will be highest. Excuse me. And I want to thank Anne because it sounds like 16 people called her on this.
I think you're right.
So I think that the height of the proposed shrubs, I think, you know, I thank you for making those amendments to the site plan. And I thank Thomas for his, his opinion on the covenants and restrictions. You know, as reluctant as some of us are, and I would be among them, to remove those picnic tables, I think that's really how this was meant to be in the original, in the original planning board decision on this. I think they envisioned that strip of land in front of it to screen that big pool of asphalt there from the Springs Fire Place Road. So my recommendation would be to waive the public hearing. I think this has, you know, been going on long enough, and I do think it fits the description for waiver. But I'd want to hear from the rest of the board, and then we'll go through the questions. Okay, Sharon, you're up.
I don't have anything to add. I think, you know, the questions we had were answered, and I'm happy with, you know, with where that went. And, you know, removing the picnic tables, I think, is necessary. And I agree, I don't think this needs a public hearing.
Great, thank you. Randy? Randy, if you may be muted, we can't hear you.
Yeah, I thought the attorneys did a good job of reasoning that out, and removing the picnic tables makes sense, and the applicant seems fine with it, and I, I'm okay with waiving the public hearing.
Great, Ian?
Yeah, I agree with all the points.
Excellent. Boy, I like the way this is going. Okay, Lou?
I'm in agreement with everything that you said, Kathy, and everybody that followed you.
All right, terrific. All right, so we'll go through the questions. Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, regarding the scenic easement, we're good with resolving it, that, um, the plantings that are there remain, the, the, um, picnic tables have to be removed, and the applicant has agreed to that. Uh, do we request any additional information at this time?
No.
My answer would be no to that. Everybody else good?
Yep, we're good.
Does the board wish to require a public hearing? I think we're in agreement that no public hearing is necessary. All right, so I think we can deem this application complete. Um, I forgot now, do we need a motion to 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 do that, Thomas, or? Um, no, Cat, no, you just, if you're gonna, you have a resolution of approval, that you'll be approving it, that's all. Okay, all right, so if for the applicant, I'll thank you for your patience and, um, for the fine service of the one stop during this crisis, and, uh, you know, get those picnic tables out of there, and we'll be good to go. Very much. Okay, take care. Thank you, Susan and Shannon. Okay, Sam, you're back on. Where is he? Oh, Sam!
Here I am, here I am.
Sam, I don't, I don't know if it's you or it may be you, but we just went through this application and record time.
Yeah, I know, well, you know, I guess Kathy is.
Thanks, Lou. Makes me feel good.
Mine.
Right, Koochie, Koochie is up.
Well, we can, we can listen, we can do Koochie, let's see how fast we can do Koochie.
Let's uh check and make sure the applicant's on.
Right.
It's Jeffrey Fireich. I'm here, thank you.
Great, that's great. Wow, things are working tonight. Now, I shouldn't have said that.
Okay, but we can go, we can slam the brakes on it now if you want. And remember, folks, we do have, um, um, another one after this. We'd have a, a, the artist certification.
Right.
So, all right, let's, um, let's see, is this, this one, is this one for B, or is this one, I'm sorry, this is, um?
This is Marco.
Marco, my, I'm sorry. I'm trying to go around.
Good evening, board members. Um, this is, okay, so, site plan application has been made for a fenced-in gravel base facility for portal, portable sanitary units, supplies, and vehicles on a parcel containing a legally pre-existing non-conforming single-family residence. The property is located on Queens Lane within the Springs Fireplace Road corridor and is zoned CI commercial industrial, is one hundred percent, is a Meyer typo, it's one hundred percent cleared of natural vegetation. The neighboring properties to the east, west, north, and south are also zoned CI commercial industrial and contain industrial uses. Pursuant to SECRA and chapter one twenty-eight of the town code, uh, the proposed project is an unlisted action. The planning department recommends that the board declare lead agency status. The applicants have applied for a service commercial use, which is defined in section two fifty-five dash one dash twenty of the town code as follows. Service commercial, a place of work for building trade shops or contractors, including but not limited to electrician, plumbing, landscaping, building, and construction contractor shops. This use definition has most commonly been applied to shops, for example, buildings where contractors store routinely service, routinely serviced equipment for contractors. The equip, uh, the applicants appear to be proposing something more like a storage yard as they are proposing no new buildings, but rather an outdoor area for storage of various items for an individual contractor business. Storage yard is not a specifically defined use in section two fifty-five dash one dash twenty, but it is within the use tables. Service commercial is a special permit use in the CI commercial industrial zoning district, and storage yard is a permitted use. The applicants should outline the proposed nature of the use in a more detail for the board at this time, and the board may wish to consult the building inspector as to what the proper use definition should be. It appears based upon a review of building department records and aerial photographs that the rear portion of this property has been used for storage since at least two thousand four without the benefit of site plan approval. I'm going to screen share, uh, photos that detail this. So this is a two thousand and four aerial of seventy-four Queens Lane, and this rear portion here is the one in question. And you can see, this is a two thousand and six aerial, you can see storage of vehicles and porta-potties. This is the residence, two thousand and seven, and two thousand and ten, and two thousand and thirteen, and two thousand and sixteen. The parcel is situated within the South Fork Special Groundwater Protection Area. The submitted plans do not indicate any proposed storm water control structures or calculations. The plans indicate that the storage area is to be gravel, but no standard cross-section, which would illustrate any proposed layers of different base-to-top materials, has been provided. If the storage area is simply to be a layer of gravel, such a design would allow any hazardous liquids to spill directly leach into the groundwater. The applicants should include a narrative, what items are proposed to be stored on the site, particularly hazardous materials such as liquid fuels for the vehicles stated to be stored on-site, chemicals, substances needed to sterilize portable toilets, or equipment needed to ensure the same. The need for structures that could contain potentially hazardous materials should be discussed. The property has a certificate of occupancy for a modestly sized yet pre-existing non-conforming use in the form of a single-family residence, a non-conforming use in CI commercial zoning district. The applicants propose a second conforming use. Section two fifty-five dash two dash forty-five A, part one and two of the town code references the number of allowable uses on a lot. Part one is as follows. Any one residential district lot or any one residential property, one use or agricultural or and or hu- animal husbandry plus one other use. Part two follows as any one commercial district lot or any one commercial property in any district, two uses. The definitions of commercial property and residential property indicate that this is a residential property and that a commercial use would only be permitted if the residents were removed. Under the definition of commercial property, any lot containing a non-conforming business use and any vacant or improved lot in a single, in a commercial use district, unless the only principal use or uses on that lot are one or more single-family residents. For a residential property, any lot in any district on which there are located one or more single-family residents as the only principal use or uses on the lot, and any vacant lot in any single-family residential district. The project description states that vehicles will be stored on the site, no parking spaces or access lanes have been illustrated, and this will be required to determine compliance with the code. The rear storage area is about a quarter of an acre and oddly shaped, making it constrained in limited parking and limited, and limiting areas where vehicles would be able to meet code, required dimensions for parking spaces, parking spaces, and access lanes as well as turning abilities. It appears that the only area which could possibly meet the, these standards would be the northern part of the storage area. Parking spaces and access lanes as well as turning abilities. My apologies, uh, I meant to say, it appears that the only area which could possibly meet these standards would be the northern part of the storage area. Parking spaces and access lanes will need to be illustrated on the site plan. The type and size of vehicles to be stored on-site should be identified in order to determine if onsite circulation is adequate. Access to the rear storage area is currently taken across the property to the immediate north, seventy-six Queens Lane.
Hey Marco, could I just stop you right there?
Yes.
Because I'm, I'm confused with this, this particular note in the memo. So where it says paved driveway on this survey that we're looking at, that, that, that's the driveway that I use to enter the property. So where, I'm confused, where is the, how is that an access that crosses over an adjacent property? Is it that sliver of, of land that, that is marked there between those two lines?
Um, I, you know what, I, I believe the applicant can address that. Um, they did mention it in the, um, the narrative that they submitted with the application, and then also, um, once Marco is, um, is finished, uh, he can call up an aerial photograph, and I'll show you a lot better what we're talking about as far as.
Okay.
Thank you, Eric.
Moving on, um, to traffic, no estimates of generated tra- generated vehicular traffic have been provided. This information should be required particularly if, particularly given the lot's location within the Springs Fireplace Road corridor, which already has a large volume of traffic, much of it for large commercial vehicles. It appears the proposed project meets all dimensional requirements with the exception that the storage area has been proposed right up to the rear and both side property lines. The minimum required rear and side yard setbacks from these property lines are twenty-five feet and fifteen feet respectively. However, the board has the authority to waive accessory structure setbacks pursuant to section two fifty-five dash six dash sixty-three of the town code. The property is entirely surrounded by CI commercial industrial zoning. The board should determine whether or not to waive the accessory structure setbacks. No information pertaining to exterior lighting has been submitted. If the lighting is proposed, a lighting plan should be submitted. Additionally, no information pertaining to additional landscaping or screening has been submitted. The board should determine if this is necessary. It would be beneficial to add screening along Queens Lane and possibly a scenic easement, although the lot does not have a significant length of frontage along this roadway. A full site plan including the following is required. Proper title, drainage control structures, sanitary systems, including existing and proposed, uh, existing and proposed systems and sanitary calculations, parking calculations. The applicants have submitted an application to the ARB, and this involved agency's approval will ultimately be required. In conclusion, the application is incomplete pending the resolution of the aforementioned issues and the submission of the required items.
Very good. Thank you, Marco. Well, we'll do the questions when we come back. Uh, the applicant, uh, I see the applicant's, uh, on the Zoom chat, so you are welcome to, um, to take over.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. I, I, I can answer these questions, um, but I, I wasn't sure that Eric wanted to interject first to explain that. I can explain it unless Eric wants to.
Why don't you, why don't you let us, uh, you know, have your say, and then, um, then the board will, will discuss, and if we have questions for Eric or for you or for Marco, we'll raise those then.
Okay.
I, I would just say it'll aid if Marco can call up a aerial photograph of the property and that the area, but I'll let Jeffrey speak.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, so, access to this property at seventy-four Queens Lane, um, I'll wait for the aerial, would, would be coming through seventy-six Queens Lane. The, the, the entryway, which is indicated as paved for seventy-four, is the access to the residential home, not to the rear. The rear, again, is entered through seventy-six, and there is a open gate-type structure between seventy-four and seventy-six. The owner of seventy-four Queens Lane is also the owner of seventy-six Queens Lane. Let me, let me just lay a couple of concerns. There'll be no hazardous material, chemicals, et cetera.
Wait, before you go on, I'm sorry, I'm still confused. Where is seventy-six Queens Lane?
Um, Marco, if you can just go to the, um, to GIS instead of those, um, those pictures, or if you want, I already have it called up. If you wanna stop screen sharing, I, I can put it up in two seconds.
Uh, you can pull it up.
Okay.
I believe seventy-six is just to the north.
Yes, that's correct.
Eric, bring it up, please, thank you.
Um, so, uh, this, this right here is the subject property, uh, oops, give me a second. Um, this is the subject property. Uh, I, excuse me, I just need to, um, deuce that. Uh, so here's the property, here's the residence in front. Um, the access right now for the residence is taken from, um, Queens Lane through of various, um, driveways, dirt driveways, um, that are semi-circular here, there's a small lawn in the middle. Um, this area back here where they're proposing to have the storage is currently fenced in entirely by a stockade fence, and then this is what we're talking about. So this is seventy-four, um, seventy-six up here. The access to that back area is actually over this property to the north, which is seventy-four. I believe the applicant owns both properties. Uh, however, there's nothing indicated in the application that there's any kind of, um, access easement proposed. Um, I believe this has just been happening, um, by virtue of the fact that they own the same property. Uh, Jeffrey can clarify that.
Yes, but, but I'm, I'm having trouble reconciling what you're showing me here with that survey, that depiction of the driveway on the survey. And also, when I drove into the property, maybe I'm wrong, but it looked like I drove into that northern part of the subject property. And that survey showed, it said paved driveway, it looked like, maybe, again, and maybe I'm wrong, it looked like it entered this, this part of the subject property, the northern part of the subject property. Did it actually end, was that paved driveway further north and on seventy-six, uh, Queens Lane? Can you put that survey back up?
Yeah, I think I just did, I hope.
It's not up.
No, it's not? Okay.
Uh, if, this is Joanne, if I could also just say that there's an approved site plan on that, uh, seventy-six, which does not provide for an access to this property.
Okay, so you see where it says paved driveway? So what you're telling me is that that paved driveway is entering seventy-six Queens Lane?
Correct.
That, that rectangle or square, that, that is seventy-six Queens Lane?
No, that's seventy-four.
It's not, it's not.
The access is not shown, the, the correct access is not shown on the site plan.
But what, what is that paved driveway? It's, it seems that that's the driveway I took to enter the property from Queens Lane the other day.
What, what you're looking at, if I may, is the, where it says paved driveway, that's access to seventy-four, not seventy-six. Seventy-six is to the north. The survey shows seventy-four, and seventy-six is on, is where you see Dayton Avenue to the north. The property to the north is, is actually seventy-six.
All right, but that's what's confusing. The, the report says that you can only access seventy-four from seventy-six, but this survey shows that you can access it directly from Queens Lane onto seventy-four.
But technically, that's not what it says. I said access is currently taken, not that it can only be taken. Just clarify.
Currently, the, currently, the way to.
Guys, I, I wanna hear from the applicant as to how you get onto the, this property, and then we gotta keep going, because it's, you know, ten after nine already, and we haven't even heard any substance on this application.
Let me explain. Currently, currently, the way to the rear, what we're, to the rear of seventy-four is to use the prop, the access to property at seventy-six Queens Lane. Seventy-six Queens Lane is also owned by the applicant to set of seventy-four. He's willing to give whatever easement would be reg- He's willing to give whatever easement would be required to access 74. So the access that you're looking at on the survey is really the access used for the house, not for the rear portion of the property. The way to get to the rear portion of the property is to go through 76. And it's being shown now on the aerial, is that there is a wide driveway on 76 off of Queens Lane, which is used and there's an opening in the stockade fence along that blue line on the property line, which is how access is gained to 74.
The site plan needs to be revised to show that because it's not indicating the true conditions or proposal.
And it's very confusing, as Lou says, that the use that you're proposing with these porta potties is access from a different spot. I totally, you know, agree with him that the submitted surveys, it doesn't, it's not representative of what it is you're requesting.
Well, I agree with you. It could be clearer and we will be happy to clear that up.
I think we need to see what the approved site plan is on 74 to make sure that what you're proposing is compatible and that an access easement would also be compatible with that approved site plan. We don't...
Yeah, I don't see how we can even determine what can go on this lot until we know what the relationship is to the adjoining lot, especially as access is meant to be achieved through that lot.
Please, let's let the applicant finish and then question him.
I have no problem in submitting a site plan which will clarify the issues that you have today.
Thank you.
But maybe we can just deal with some of the substance if we can so that when I do submit a site plan, you know, we will avoid some unnecessary, some questions that don't have to be asked if I clarify some of the issues, which is what I'm intending to do now. What I'm telling you, applicant is proposing, today if you went to the site, there were no porta potties at 74. They've been removed. So the area to the rear of 74 today is clear. On the other side, that is on the other side of the stockade fence behind the residence at 74. Applicant is proposing to put, to store the porta potties and when I do submit a revised site plan, I will particularize exactly where the storage units will be held and where the applicant proposes to park two trucks and two trailers. Applicant, the use which you're looking at now has been ongoing, granted without the necessary permits, probably for a couple decades at least. So what we're trying to do is legalize what has been done before. There are no variances required with this application. And again, it's going to improve what was there before the applicant did remove all the porta potties, which we had asked them to do because there were, we had some discussions with the building department and we just thought it'd be best to get the units off the site. Because we advise them that we're trying to legalize that use of porta potties. So that is pretty much a proposal. The applicant is willing, again, to create access through, with an easement, through 76, which will be in perpetuity. The use here is totally consistent with what is going on around this property. There are dumpsters to the property to the south and to the west and to the southwest. I believe the address is 202 Springs Fireplace. And there are only a few properties in this area in the CI zone here. Again, there are no variances and we'll clarify this further with our revised site plan to help clarify this for the board. This was basically, we wanted to explore this with the board. We got the planning board memo, the planning memo for Eric. And we clearly understand we need a little bit more detail, which we'll give you with the revised site plan. Now, as far as 76, if you want us to include the survey for 76, I'll be happy to do that also.
We probably will need to just because you're taking access through it. So we're going to need to know what it really looks like or what it really, you know, it looks like on the ground. All right. Was there anything else that you wanted to impart, Jeff?
No, I think, you know, I'm here to respond to questions about the...
All right, Lou, you want to take over? It's your application.
Okay. Let me start with the setbacks. I know that's a weird spot to start on this application, but the reason I'm doing that is because I want to start with something that I'm sort of agreeable to and save everything else for my disagreeable section. So I agree that, you know, it's the zone that it's in. I would be amenable to relaxing those setbacks because of the reasons that you gave. It's all a commercial industrialized zone. It's all enclosed. I don't think it's a big deal that you store beyond the setback requirements. But the road to get this application approved, to get to that point where we decide on whether or not to relax those setbacks, is from here, the East Coast, all the way to California. There are so many more issues. And before I get to them, I also want to editorialize. You know, this is not part of my duty as a planning board member, but I, you know, I'm just going to take the liberty and say, because I feel like it, that, and I think it's important, that, you know, this property, according to the aerials, has been illegally storing whatever, porta potties or God knows what, in a special groundwater protection area illegally for almost 20 years. And now we're expected to legalize it. And even now, when you bring it in front of us, there are major problems that need to be resolved. The least, not the least of which, which, you know, Marco pointed out in the memo, is that there is a residence on this property and the code specifically clear cut says that you cannot have a second use on a residential property, which this is because of that residence. So the only, you know, sort of regret that I have with that is that it's probably a residence that houses, that it's needed housing, let me put it that way. So I would, you know, I would hate to do away with it because I think it's necessary. But that doesn't negate the fact that you cannot have this other use on the property as long as that house is there, even though it's non-conforming.
Can I address that? Or should I have to?
Yeah, I got it.
This is a commercial property which allows two uses. And although, yes, there is a residential property there today and may not seem right, according to code, we would be allowed to have a commercial use in the rear. It is a CI zone and Section 255-2-45 would allow that. And as far as the issue with the porta potties, I'm not disagreeing with you. Yes, it's been there for 20-plus years. And if it's any, you know, if it's any consolation, there are no chemicals stored on that property. Okay? And the entire operation, the entire porta potty, the units are cleaned at the sites where they are leased, according to Mr. Cucci who I spoke to about that specific issue. But I'm not arguing with you that, you know, this is what should have been done for the last 20 years, but it was. You know, and we're dealing with it now.
Okay.
Lou, can I just clarify that 255-245 classifies this as a residential property, which is allowed one use, even though, because that's what it has a COO for and it fits the definition under the code of a residential property. So you're not allowed two uses as it stands now.
The code is very clear cut and the planning department has discussed this. I mean, the definition of commercial property says any lot, and Marco read it for you, containing a non-conforming business use or any vacant lot or improved lot in a commercial use district, unless the only principal use or uses on that lot are one or more single-family residences. And then it says see residential property. That's what this property is. It's a commercial district that has a single-family residence. The code clearly says, see the definition of residential property. And then when you go to look at how many uses are allowed on a residential property, it's one. I think it's pretty clear in the code.
Let's not get into a conversation now about the use, about what the law says because I've got the applicant to, please.
All right, but listen, I think we do allow a second floor apartment for over a commercial building in that district.
But that's not what we're...
No, but that might, that might... That might be the way for the applicant to remove the existing residence and include an apartment in a new commercial building.
Right. I think most of us are thinking along those lines.
Well, I mean, there is somebody living in that house. It's owned by the applicant. I respectfully disagree and will pursue that further.
Yeah, thank you. That's what's going to...
Okay, if I may continue.
All right, now Lou, let's...
Yeah, I'll just finish up because I think that's the big, you know, elephant in the room is this issue that you're disagreeing with. That needs to be resolved. You know, I read the code section. I spoke to Eric and Marco. I know that's not the final authority, but it seems clear cut to me that this is a residential property and it only allows one use. But anyway, noted that you disagree with that. So that needs to be resolved before anything else. The other items, which are not as important, but although some are, which, again, I think these are areas that need to get, we need to get to after we resolve this major issue, as well as the access, get all that straightened out as well. Again, this is a special groundwater protection area and I know you're, I read your narrative and it's sort of contradictory in some respects with regard to what you said and what it says within it itself with regard to what is being stored. In one section of your narrative, it says that these sanitary toilet units are cleaned elsewhere and they're just stored on the property so there are no chemicals or anything of that sort. But there are other areas of your narrative which say, and I'll quote, "The proposed use is consistent with service commercial as the storage of equipment and supplies." So supplies could be anything and anything that leaks in this area is very dangerous for the environment. So that whole question would need to be delved into deeply and we would need to be reassured that the area is protected from seepage of any chemicals that would do harm to the groundwater.
I can tell you there will be no, there won't be any supplies stored.
Okay, I'm just bringing up...
That's important. And also no function. I mean, it's that, I think it needs, I'm sorry, I'm just, it needs to be clear that all they're doing is bringing the porta potties in on a flatbed or on a pickup or however you do it and dropping them off and picking them up and taking them off. And there's no cleaning, there's no sanitizing, there's no fumigating, nothing other than parking.
But aren't they...
Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Do the porta potties have the liquid in them, you know, whatever they...
I was just going to say that.
Fluent, yeah.
No, I mean, if they have the liquid, whatever porta potties use...
Disinfectant, whatever it is that they put in there when they're in use.
So is that in the porta potties when they're stored on the site?
I am advised they are not. I'm advised that they're cleaned with a pine soil, soap-water mix at the premises where they are leased and not at the site.
So you mean if I lease one, it's going to be cleaned at my house? I don't know. I guess, I wonder, aren't they, don't they have to be cleaned at a sewage treatment facility or...
Apparently not.
Look, the important thing is...
This is something we can ask for in a more detailed narrative.
Exactly.
All right, I just want to go quick, just finish up on my points. These are points that, you know, need to be addressed. We're not going to be resolving them here tonight. It's like we're not resolving the residential use. We're not resolving the chemicals that are going to be stored. But I just, you know, we're bringing these up because these are the areas that we think, or I think at least, are very important and that we're not going to approve, I'm not going to approve this unless I'm totally satisfied with that these areas are being addressed. The other area that should be addressed is, which was also mentioned in the memo, is the parking and the method of, I know that you're saying the method of access is from the north, but also the circulation of the vehicles, the turning lanes and that kind of thing. It doesn't seem like there's enough room. That needs to be depicted so that we know that it's done in a safe and proper manner. And lastly, the last point I just wanted to make is, again, the memo points out of possibly having a scenic easement and landscaping to protect the, anyone driving on Queens Lane from the view of viewing porta potties being stored. Because the property is right on Queens Lane, so I think it's important that some kind of offer zone of vegetation be presented to us that would block the view of what's being stored on the property. And that's it. Those are my points.
All right, let me very quickly ask, because we will, thank you Lou, I didn't mean to jump right in. Ian and Sharon, you haven't chimed in on anything on this one. Did you have anything, either of you? Ian, did you have anything you wanted to ask on this?
No, I mean, I think that Marco did a great job with the memo and I think the applicant can work with him on solving some of the issues and I think there are issues.
All right, no, there are. Okay. Sharon, did you have any particular thing you wanted to raise on the issue?
I feel the same way. I think Lou did a good job of, you know, giving us what all the issues are and we just need to resolve, yeah, all of the outstanding possibilities.
There's a lot, Randy and Kathy, did you have anything you guys wanted to add?
Well, I just wanted to say that I think, you know, it's in the special groundwater area. So special groundwater protection policy is going to have to be observed and any landscaping should be in keeping with what's recommended. You know, oaks and other trees that will help with the recharge of the water in that area because while it is a commercial lot, it's, you know, there is a fair amount of, you know, existing, why can't I say this word, you know, vegetation. So, and I think we need a detailed narrative. I don't want to reiterate everything. I think...
Yeah, no, I mean, we covered it all.
But I want to emphasize a special groundwater protection policy for anything that happens in this, in this area and the building and the driveways and all the rest.
Shannon, was you just raising your hand?
No, 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 no.
Randy, did you have anything else you want to make sure we got covered?
I think it's been covered well. My only suggestion would be that the planning department route this, routed to the consulting engineers working on the fireplace corridor study.
It should definitely be included in, without a doubt.
I had that in my notes too.
Very good point. Yeah, well, the applicant, you know, there's a lot of issues. I think you need to give us some kind of letter explaining what you're going to be doing about the, um, you know, about why it is or isn't the, uh, two uses on a residential property. We're going to need to have some clarification on that, something specific. Uh, we're going to need to, we're going to need to really have something very, very clear about whether there are liquids involved because it's been pointed out many times accurately. It's groundwater protection and, you know, of all the particular, uh, liquids that we might be concerned with. This is pretty high on the list. So let's make sure that we, that, that, that there's no doubt as to what's going on. And, and also the survey, whatever it is that we're going to have, that's going to show precisely how this access.
I think, Sam, could I say that we all agree that porta potties are important and we need them? And this is a good place for them.
Well, you know, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it, no, no, no one can deny the necessity of porta potties in the world. So, uh, but, but, but as far as this application goes is, you know, it's, it, it, it needs a number of things to be straightened out.
You will receive it.
We need to declare lead agency, Sam.
Yeah, I was about to reach over to my little sheet sheet. So, uh, Lou.
I make a motion that we declare for a lead agency.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? There's the lead agent. All right. Uh, all these, you're gonna, these are the questions. And I, I, no one needs to add anything because it's all obvious. Should the applicant clarify what items are proposed to be stored on the site? Particularly hazardous materials, so there's liquid fuels for the vehicles stated to be stored on site. Chemical substances needed to sterilize portable toilets and equipment needed to ensure the same. Next is should details regarding parking, access and onsite circulation be provided and should information regarding generated traffic be submitted, including a possible traffic study? I think we can, we, we're going to put this into the, uh, Springs Fireplace Corridor. So, uh, I think that, that may cover us at least for now. Not saying we wouldn't down the road, but for now. Should any landscaping or screening be provided? Kathy, you did mention that, I think. That was something you came up with and I agree. I think we all do. Anyone?
We will, will maybe not waive the setback completely on Queen's Lane. So you can put some trees in there.
Right.
You know, it's all over peace. So let's, let's, let's see what the applicant comes back with next. Thank you.
And also the relationship to the neighboring property and that access, that, that's a, that's a key component to understanding how this functions. We didn't really, um, review.
That's why I asked for a survey because, you know, it's, I mean, if you look at the picture that's there right now, I mean, it's, it's obviously they need, we need to see.
Right. There's, there's an approved site plan. We need to see what the approved site plans are for both these properties. So we can see.
I agree to supply it. I will.
All right. All right. Mr. Fryridge, you have to work, you know, you have to work with the planner. And by the way, Marco, crackerjack job on this one. This was, had a lot of moving parts and, uh, and you, you, you put them all in, in place. So thank you.
Oh man. I think Marco asked for, to show the, the residence septic. Well, actually that'll come, we have to figure out if that residence is staying or not.
We gotta, yeah, we gotta know what, what the plans are. That's long term.
Get off the porta potty.
No. All right. All right. Thank you all very much. Uh, Mr. Fryridge, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we will move on to, um, Nicholas Cohen. Do I have the name correct?
Yeah, that's it. Nick Cohen.
I'm sorry. Nick Cohen.
Nick Cohen.
And this one, Joanne, is yours.
Is the applicant present?
Yes, thank you, Tom. Is Mr. Cohen or is Representative online?
I, I see him there. I think he's muted.
I'm sorry. I didn't hit mute. First time zoom.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here. Application.
I'd like, I'd like to share my screen. So I guess Eric has to stop sharing or whoever's got the aerial up has to stop sharing.
Should be good.
Um, okay. So. All right. So this is a first, um, application of this type that you're reviewing. Just, just to give you a little bit of background that the regulations regarding an artist studio have been in the town code for quite some time. I, I, the la, the first amendment that I found was in 1990. So they go back prior to that date. In the past, the process was that an application, um, be submitted to and reviewed and processed by the building department. And then when the, the applicant was ready, a declaration of covenants and restrictions was submitted to the town attorney's office. The town board held a public hearing on it and accepting it, and that represented the approval. In, in 2019, the code was revised to provide that the planning board would review and approve artist studios. And there have been a number submitted, uh, or several of them submitted. One of them was representative of building being, uh, in addition, being attached to a residence, which doesn't require approval as an artist studio because it's just an attachment to an, an existing building and part of the residence. Another one, the applicant was actually a writer, which doesn't qualify. And then there were others pending that haven't yet submitted the information that demonstrates that they qualify with regard to specific dimensional regulations. So this is the first one that's come to you. As a background, I thought it would be helpful to just run through the declaration of covenants and restrictions that the applicant will, will be required to file should you approve this because it answers a lot of questions about um, what can or can't be done. And right now I've got up in, on the screen in blue, the, that represents the location of the artist studio. And I'll just zoom in a little bit.
Not sure. We don't see it.
Screen show yet.
Yeah, not there yet. Yeah, I might have screwed it up for you, Joanne. Hit, uh, share screen again. There you go.
You got it now?
It's going to start in a second. Here you go.
Okay. It's up now.
Okay, you can see it now?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So the, the larger blue square is a vacant lot where the artist studio is going. And the smaller one is where the applicant, um, owns the, owns the adjoining property and residence. But just to go through the artist studio declaration, um, as quickly as I can. Um, it shall not contain more than one story, which may be situated above a garage or other conforming accessory structure. Shall not be of greater height together with any ground level garage or other conforming accessory structure. Shall not have a gross floor area and it, it limits the size of the gross floor area. Um, may have a sink or sinks, but shall have no bath, shower, toilet or other plumbing. Um, shall not contain any kitchen appliances except the microwave or a coffee maker. Shall not be rented or sold to any person for any purpose, except as part of a rental or sale of the entire property. Shall not be used at any time for sleeping or living purposes. Shall be used only for painting, drawing, sculptor, sculpting or other similar activities involving the crafting or manipulation of materials. Um, in the event that the studio is not or cannot, will be employed for the purpose or use set forth for a period of six months. I'm sorry, my, sorry, my lights just went out. Okay. So, um, let's see, it shall not be, if, if the, in, in events, the studio is not or cannot, um, or will not be employed for this purpose, uh, the artist must notify the building department in writing. At the request of the artist, the town board may permit, permit a studio to remain vacant for more than six months upon extenuating circumstances. Absent that finding, either the new artist occupying the studio has to apply for an artist studio. Or such studio shall be removed from the property or demolished. Or the plumbing existing therein removed and the studio reduced to the conforming size of a accessory structure, which is 600 square feet. At the expense of the property owner. There shall be no commercial exhibits of art to the public on the property, except those exhibits that are part of an organized and advertising tour of artist studios. Uh, there shall be no additional parking. The owner, renter of the property consents to an annual inspection. Okay, um, and then there, um, there's a provision for, um, violations. So with that said, I, I'll explain to you what's proposed on this particular application. So. This is an application to construct a 26 by 40 foot or 1,094 square foot artist studio on a vacant 25,000 square foot parcel. It's on Lafayette Place in Springs in a B resident zoning district. Um, the applicant is in contact to, to buy the property and owns the adjacent one. Um, in my, okay, in my review, I thought that the property that the applicant owned was to the north and not this one. So it, that may affect some, a couple of things that I say later on. So the first thing that has to happen is the town code requires that the, that documents be submitted that demonstrate that the applicant is a working artist. Um, including a description of the art form, um, professional art resume, um, letters of reference attesting to the artistic nature of the artist's work and um, documentation of the artist's art form. We have received a resume and we have received the letters, which do appear to comply. Um, we also have some, some photographs have been submitted of the applicant's, um, portfolio. This is an addendum to the portfolio of work. Um, this shows, um, steel and enamel sculpture that was welded. Um, there's another one that, um, this shows a, um, walnut and bronze table that was made by the applicant. And this one shows some teak and steel sculpture. So. Um, and under the code, fine arts is defined again as a study and creation of visual works of art requiring highly developed techniques and skills, uh, may include, but it's not limited to painting, sculpture, printmaking, ceramics and photography. So you need to find that the, um, applicant, um, has demonstrated that they're a working artist. Um, that being said, the code has several, um, has several requirements regarding the size of the structure. It limits the size of an artist's studio to that of a legal accessory structure, which is 600 square feet. Unless the applicant demonstrates to the planning board that they need a larger structure. And in this case, um, they're proposing a, um, a structure that's 1,094 square feet. Um, which is 490 square feet over the limitation of accessory structures. So you, the planning board would need to, to approve that size structure. The planning board would need to determine that the property constraints make it difficult or impractical to construct a studio that is attached to the principal building or to construct a studio that conforms to the size of an accessory structure. That the applicant has justified the need for a larger studio based on the applicant's art form and the scope or size of the work and that the size is compatible with a residential neighborhood. Um, the, the site plan that I have, this is a site plan that I have up here now, which is showing the vacant lot and the, the location of the proposed studio. And then, and also, um, highlighted is the, um, existing home on the adjoining lot that the applicant owns. So if the board makes a finding that the larger structure is justified, then there are additional limitations on the, on the size that the artist's studio can be. And of the three, um, the most restrictive is what applies. And in that case is that it, the gross floor area of the ground floor of the residence, it, it can't exceed the gross floor area of the existing residence. And in this case, the residence is on the adjoining lot and that is 1,040 square feet. So they have tailored their application that their, the size of the studio is no, equals, is no larger than the, um, size of the home on the existing, on the adjoining property. Usually you can't have an accessory structure on a, on a, on a vacant property. There's a provision of the code that does allow for that. Um, and that's 255 1120, which essentially says that you could put an accessory structure on a, a lot without a principal structure. If the title to the contiguous property is held in the same name. Um, if, or held by a married or registered domestic couple without any combination of one or both names on either deed. And, and, and essence, it has to be, um, owned in the same name as the adjoining property. A question did come up earlier about whether or not the two parcels would merge if they were both in the same name. And my, um, initial response was no, because you can't, this provision of the code allows the accessory structure. But in looking at the, looking at the size, because I was looking at the wrong lot. This, the, the size that the residence is on is only 12,000 square feet, which doesn't meet zoning. So normally when you've got a parcel that doesn't meet zoning with regard to lot area and you put an adjoining parcel in the same no, name, they are required to merge. So that's a legal question, but I believe that they might be required to be merged. Which means that would preclude the ability to have a, a second residence on the parcel that the studio is proposed on.
What does that do to this application, Joanne?
I'm sorry?
What does that do to this application right now?
Well, if that's the case, the, um, owner would have to decide whether he wants to proceed. Um, to put a studio on it. It looks like the studio is, is located in a location that would, assuming that there's going to be a, a second, another home built on it. Allowing for that in the future. And I think we need, um, our attorney's input on this. And I know he has not a chance to look at it yet, but the way I'm reading it, or it, it's possible that, that putting both the names, both properties in the same name, as is required to have a accessory structure on a parcel without a, without a principal structure, would result in the two parcel merging. So I don't know, maybe legally, the, our attorney can look at whether there's ways that that is, wouldn't necessarily have to happen.
Joe.
Legal question.
Joanne, I just wanted to ask you, uh, if Nick, excuse me, if Nick were to, build a, a new house on the vacant lot and attach or include, incorporate his studio in the new house. He could do that and kind of protect all his options and not have to get our permission for an artist's studio.
That's correct.
I wonder if he's considered that. Okay.
Okay, I've got one, one last thing to say and that's, um, there's a limitation on plumbing and they do have the floor. I, let me give you the floor plans of the, I'm not sure. I, it looks like I didn't copy the floor plans, but the floor plans show that they have a notation on it that, that there will be no plumbing other than the, the sink. And we did note that he, they would be required to file the covenants and restrictions that we went over earlier. So there are really two questions here, um, other than the legal one. And that's whether the board finds this, applicant to be a working artist and if so, whether they would, um, find that, agree that the, um, larger artist studio, um, of 1,040 square feet is, um, is necessary and, um, whether, yes, necessary in terms of the size and it being a separate structure. And then we have to, uh, consider the legal question.
All right. Um, should we turn it over to the applicant at this point? I think that, uh, we'd like to hear from the applicant. Uh, again, the, uh, the applicant is kind of, you know, the, our maiden voyage in this kind of, uh, application. So, um, we'll be learning as we go. But I think what we need, what the applicant probably needs to focus on is, um, his background and, uh, his, uh, his resume essentially is qualifications as an artist. Whether he qualifies for this. an artist, whether he qualifies for this use, and also why he needs 1,000 feet. So, Mr. Cohen, it's balls on in your court now.
Okay, thank you very much. The 1,000 square feet would be, as of now, I do large-scale work. I have a studio in Sagaponik, which is 2,400 square feet. Ideally, I could have a larger studio, but through the process, we realized that the first floor of the house is what you're allowed to have as a maximum studio space. As for the land differentiation of if we can have that property that way, I mean, the idea would be to put a house there, but I'm not really in a financial state to have two pieces, two houses. I'm not really looking to have two houses. I would like to have a studio adjacent from my house. I think it's an artist's dream to have that in their lifetime. So when the opportunity arose to the piece of property next to me, we basically went into a contract with the homeowner, which I ended up phone calling, finding out the woman's name, and she said that she'd be willing to sell it to us, and I said, well, it has to be contingent on the fact that the town will grant me the ability to put an artist's studio. Financially, it would be the only way that I'd be able to do so. I've been doing it, I've been an artist my whole life. That's how I've made, that's how I make my money. Mostly, I do sculpture and functional fine art. My mediums are wood and metal. I sometimes will do, I mean, I want to move into different mediums. It started out in sketching, drawing, painting, and then maybe about 10 years ago, I started to move more into wood and metal. I have some education in Boulder, Colorado, when I was younger, Maine School of Art, where I did stone carving, life drawing, a bunch of different classes I took in the arts. I mean, I don't, what else can I tell you? What else would you like to know?
Well, I mean, you know, we have to make a judgment about whether or not you are, whether or not you qualify based on, there's a whole bunch of criteria set out in the code, and so, you know, I mean, I don't want to tell you how to present your application and stuff.
Right, I mean, the application was very extensive. We must have given like 50 photographs of my work. We got three references, being from like Ross Blechner would be a reference. I show with Tripoli Gallery of Contemporary Art, he's a reference. Hans Bonn Bovinkampf is a reference. I mean, all of them, I was like, I'm nervous going in front of the board, and all they could say was, Nick, don't worry, you're an artist, don't, don't worry.
I get that, I really do. I have, I mean, I don't want to get philosophical about defining who's an artist, but.
I reviewed Nick's application thoroughly. I read, I looked at all the photos, I looked, I read all the letters of support and his letter, and he does really beautiful work with furniture, and I thought, I thought it was.
You know what, I also did, and I'm impressed. My only concern, Randy, is this, and because I don't like, I don't want to get philosophical.
But let me, let me finish, Sam.
It's your application, I want you to. We need to set the bar at a certain level, and that's what we need.
I know. That's why I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I looked at this, and I thought, for Nick, if he, if he could build himself a house and a studio, attached studio on the vacant lot, then he doesn't have to get our determination that he's an artist, he doesn't have to meet all these dimensional requirements, then you could either sell or rent your other house. I just think that's such a more, a less problematic way for him to go, that I just wanted to encourage him to take a look at that before trying to jump through all these hoops and us trying to, you know, be the art police.
May I say something? I appreciate that, Randy, very much for, you know, I looked at all my options.
Okay.
I'm a man of small means, I have a, I care about my footprint, I care about my environment around me and the community. I'm not one that's wanting to put another house, rent a house, I'm not trying to develop more than I need in life. I believe I'm an artist, I would love recognition from the planning board to say that I'm an artist, and that's what I'm really presenting myself, it's more, it's all of it together that makes me say, it's worth jumping through the hoops, I don't mind jumping through the hoops.
Okay. So you, so just to be clear, if you, if you could build a house and a studio on the vacant lot, you would, you would have, what you're saying is your dream, and I'm just, I'm not saying that you want to become a real estate developer, but that you could then.
I know.
Possibly sell the other house, and it would be an easier way to go than the way you're going. Because here, some of the, some of the issues are whether or not, I think, and Sam, I think, was going to this, whether or not you're a, there's another use in the code called an artist's and craftsman's workshop, and that use is allowed in the commercial zones, and it's, I would say it's less noise sensitive, et cetera, because when you're going into a residential zone, the whole question of how you make your art and what equipment you use to make your art, and whether or not it's going to bother the neighbors, becomes more important.
Of course.
However, if you build your own house and have your own studio there, we don't even have to make a judgment about that. So.
Yeah, but that's not, you know, I mean, that's also.
It's really not in my.
You know, Randy, what we have to do is, we have to deal with this application on its merits as it is, and it strikes me that, you know, unless there's any member of the board who disagrees that Mr. Cohen's, you know, qualified artist, then the only issue really is the size of the, of the structure, and given the square footage of the parcel that he's working on, I mean, I can say for myself, I don't have an issue with it, but, you know, maybe other board members do certainly.
But if, if Joanne's right about the, them merging.
You're right, that may create, that may.
Question about that. So I purchased the house five years ago. So is the, are you saying, because I thought I had a third of an acre, which I might, I don't, I'm not sure what square footage that would equivalve to, but was it rezoned, and that's why I'm not, like, what'd she say, a parcel that would be?
No, you're pre-existing non-conforming with regard to lot area, so it's a smaller lot than, the minimum lot area in that size is 20,000 square feet, and I think I, the government said you were 12,000, I believe, so.
I have a survey that I can look at, and what's the house in front of me, because it seems like the same lot, is that pre-conforming to?
Pre-existing non-conforming, a lot of the properties are, I don't know specifically.
You know what it is, Nick, in that area, and hi, Nick, and you are an artist, for the record, an excellent artist, and I'm proud of you and your accomplishments, but a lot of the lots in the Springs area are smaller, but then that's something called a pre-existing non-conforming lot. If this area were to be developed now, the minimum lot size would be 20,000 square feet, which is about 8,000 square feet more than you currently have. It doesn't disqualify your lot, you know, you're all legal and that's all cool.
Right.
What happens is, because you're neighboring a lot that you plan to buy, and the lot you're on is not, doesn't meet the minimum lot requirement, then you would be, we don't know this for sure, but you need to, this, this to me is the linchpin, you've got to find that out before you can go forward. Do you see what the, whether that would merge your lots?
I guess it might be to the attorneys, but if, say I purchased a lot, and I'm on the lease of the lot, and my wife would be on the lease of one of them and not the other, then in theory, they couldn't make a call to make the lots together if one of the parties owning one of the lots isn't for that.
Let me, let me just suggest that this is not the forum for figuring that kind of question out. The forum is, do you have, do you have an attorney?
Yeah.
All right. You know, you should probably take it up.
Who's your attorney?
Who is your attorney?
Mark Catalano.
Okay.
All right.
Mark is trying, has been trying to call in. Mike, if Mark is still on the line.
Yes, just a moment, please, we'll see if we can get that going, one second, please.
And if Mark is watching.
Hey, board members? Hey, it's Mark Catalano, hi.
Mark, good, hello, welcome. Okay, good.
Okay, just wanted to weigh in on the contiguous thing. Yeah, Nick just mentioned, I mean, he was going to hopscotch the ownership with his domestic partner on the, on one lot and own the other one by himself, so under the, under the terms of the code, it says, you know, married or registered domestic couple with any combination of one or both names on either deed, so that's what they're going to do.
Right.
So that would, that would prevent the merger.
So, question though. If Thomas finds that to be, if Thomas finds that to be conforming to the code, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I need to look at it, but, you know, I have this section in front of me, it seems, you know, it seems all right, but let me, let me look at it, you know, and get, get back to you.
And also, just so you know, just so you know, the building department has historically for a long time allowed someone to own a, even without the domestic partnership or marriage, they've allowed a, one owner to own one lot, and then to own the second lot in an LLC or something like that, they've allowed that to also be, to avoid the merger, but that's, I mean, I'm not saying that's happening here, but they've done that historically, but in this case, it's the, it's the, it's the, you know, domestic partners.
All right, let me, let me go to Sharon, and then we'll wrap up around the table. Go ahead, Sharon.
Yeah, I just have a question about, because didn't Joanne mention then, you can only have the studio if the lots are in the same name, though, so then it's fine that they couldn't.
Sharon, there's three combinations of choices, and it's the same name, or there's three different choices, and I think that he may, that he may be able to qualify under the other, I was trying to take a shortcut by saying in the same name, but there are several different scenarios that play out.
All right, all right, let me, let me, because it's like five minutes to go, let me ask, does anybody on the board, anybody else have any comments that they want to get in on this, rather than, you know, the usual going around the table thing?
Sam, I do.
Keep it true.
I, I think we had a, we had a good letter from David Buddha, which points out that.
That letter came in this afternoon.
Yeah, so I, I know some of the board members may have read it, I glanced at it real quick, you know, I don't think, I don't know if the applicant's had a chance to look at it. I think the smart way to do this is to say, okay, we, you know, discuss his qualifications and, you know, move this along as much as we can, but we need to give him an opportunity to look at this letter and the rest of the board and have a chance to respond to it. It's not really fair to the applicant to have this letter submitted at 3:00 in the afternoon, you know, before the meeting, when I don't even know if the board's had a chance to read it, much less the applicant.
I can say that I haven't.
I won't mention the letter.
Okay.
I think that our, one of our principal charges here, we want to, I think, I can speak for myself, I want to, I want, you know, we'd love to see Nick buying a house and pursuing his art here. The balance we have to strike is that there are six abutting residential structures here, and we don't want, and Nick doesn't want, to have a situation where we allow a workshop or studio that is, for example, noisy, if there's a lot of, a table saw, or there's a lot of banging, it's all, this is all going to come back to the town from those neighbors, and in particular, and I would, I would, I would, I wondered, this is a question for Thomas, right now, there's no requirement that we hold a public hearing on this, which I don't think is a good idea. I think, I think all the neighbors should be noticed, and there should be a hearing.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that, but let me clarify what I was saying about that letter, just a little bit, you know, I'm not telling the board to ignore it, it's just, since it was submitted late, you know, we need to allow the applicant a chance to review it and allow the board a chance to review it before we, you know, get into it. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not telling the board to ignore any comments from the public on anything, but, you know, just because it was submitted right before the meeting, I don't think the applicant and the board has had a fair chance to really look at it.
Okay, so the point, the points then, and I'll, I'll just wrap it up, that, the points are then, that I do think that, given this is a new process before the planning board, that a public hearing for the, for the surrounding, the abutting property owners would be a fair thing to do, and I guess, for, for the record, and for Nick's benefit and for our benefit, if we could have a bit of a narrative about noise, about what kind of, you know, what kind of noise generation, what, how much equipment is he going to use? Is he going to insulate this building so that it's, the noise is contained? How are we going to deal with not having a nuisance there? And I don't have enough information to know at this point.
So I have some information, if you're open to it now.
It would be, it'll probably be a good idea, what we'll do is, we send a letter to you, send it to your lawyer, what are you, saying that these are the areas of concern, and the next time you'll be before us, we'll, we'll address those, because it's not, you know, it's nothing that we're going to be able to resolve, you know, in one meeting. He's planning, these applications, I mean, granted, we've not done an artist's studio application, but to the extent that it's treated like every other kind of application, you know, it can be before us numerous times before we say, okay, you're good to go. So.
Okay.
And let me, let me just ask if anybody else on the board has any further comments or issues that they want to make sure that are raised.
Yeah, I would like to just say, for Nick's benefit, so he knows what to come back with, because I know him to be a person who wants to keep a low footprint, and, you know, that the size of the building, if you justify the size, I can see by the artwork that you want some of the size, but I think, as Randy points out, because this is in a residence, perhaps you can indicate what sort of noise mitigation you might include if you're going to use big machines and all the rest, and also positioning it on the property in such a way that it would maintain as much of the, you know, for the present time, maintain as much of the, because it's unclear, the original vegetation, and position it as close to your residence and away from other residences as you can. The position of the studio on the neighboring property, I think, will influence how people feel about it, you know, which is one of the things you need to take into consideration.
And for that, I would be willing to put it wherever would make the most sense. So as for sound, things, sound installation, we can address that from your letter.
Yeah, what would be your framework, what we need, what we're looking for? I haven't, we haven't heard from Lou or Ian, and we only heard a little bit from Sharon, so I want to go in the chat.
I just want to tell Nick, and this, most of this is just reiterating what you already heard, I'll just put it in my own words, I think, Nick, no one, I don't think anybody disputes your merit as an artist, so that, that, you know, box gets checked off, you have no problems there. With regard to the other issues about, you know, contiguous slots and ownership, that can be worked out, you know, technically by your attorney and, and the property. and, and the proper town department with regard to that. I'm sure you'll be able to work that out to your satisfaction. I think it's gonna come down, the issue that we all need to be comfortable with, certainly I do, and Randy has mentioned this as well, is disturbance from your work to your neighbors. So we need to get comfortable with that. And I'm not sure how we do that right now, but I think that's the one item that you really need to think about and resolve and convince us that that will not be a problem. I think if you were a, a fine on, uh, fine art, art, a fine artist, fine art painter who worked on canvas with oil paints, I don't think it would be an issue, your application wouldn't be an issue except for these other technical matters. So anyway, that, that's my wrap up.
So I could take that and when, if we are moved forward, I could make sure that the sound is to a soundproofing regulation of some sort that doesn't put too much DBA or whatever the sound outside of my studio would offmate. I do have a feeling that if we're in close proximity, like I am to my neighbors, and they can put a pool next to my house, I find the pool to be awfully noisy. I find the, you know, that creates so much out, unpleasurable time for me.
Yeah, but you can't justify you making noise on your neighbor making more noise. I don't think that's the way to go.
No, I'm not, but.
Don't go down that route.
Okay. I, I understand.
We, we, we don't need to get into that at this point.
Yeah, 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 okay. I apologize.
We want you to, no, no, you just need to understand what our areas of concern are. We'll leave it to you and your lawyer to figure out what the best, uh, response, I'm not really sure what order is to that.
Sam?
Let me, let me, Randy, let me here, see if Ian and Sharon, because they, you know, Ian, you have anything on this?
No, I, I, I mean, I certainly find Nick to be an artist. Uh, you know, I have no problems with the application at all. You know, I would just advise him like others have to talk with his attorney to make sure that it's, you know, everything's code compliant with respect to the, you know, the artist studio, the merger of the lots. Um, I have no objections at all. I would encourage Nick, his attorney, to talk with the planning department and make sure that this meets the code, including, uh, noise levels and DBA at the property line. Um, so, yeah, I, I, you know, I would see where that goes, but I certainly don't have a problem with it right now.
Okay, very good. Sharon, thank you, Ian. Sharon, do you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, I don't have anything to add, but no, I, I, I encourage him to move forward. I mean, I think it could possibly work, so, um, just answer all the questions that need to be answered.
Thank you very much.
Sam?
Randy, back to you. Sorry about that.
So, so, uh, I, I want, just wanted to say going forward, if we could get a little more of a site plan, um, for example, are you, are you planning to come in to the studio from Lafayette Place? Is there gonna be a, a driveway or accessway to your studio? And then you're gonna, and then you're gonna put works, you're gonna bring materials in and work out that way? Or are you gonna come in through your house lot? So we need to see how you plan to access and park. And the other thing is, we need to know what's going down the sink. And if you're just putting in, uh, if it's a septic, this is a question for the planning department. If Nick has to put in a septic system for a sink, and if that requires health department approval?
I don't.
We're looking at.
You don't have to answer, Nick. I think it's, it's an issue that we're putting out there.
But I'll get an R P.
Something on that?
I'm, I'm not sure, but we're looking to it.
Yeah, we'll, you know, you look, you're gonna work with the planning department. Like, like, I, I've said it a couple of times. You, you're our, you know, our maiden voyage here. We're gonna, uh, figure out what makes the most sense for this kind of application. Yours is a particularly interesting application from a planning point of view, because as Lou pointed out before, you're not sitting there with, you know, brushes and canvas and, uh, you know, a can of, uh, oils or waters. Uh, but, uh, you know, you're, you're doing sculpture, and that's gonna involve noise, and that's gonna involve, uh, possible disturbance for neighbors, so we have to bear that in mind. But it's a process. You, you, my window, yeah, and welcome to the process.
Thank you for having me.
All right, look, everybody, I know, uh, it's getting a little, uh, you know, itchy and, uh, does anyone, at the risk of continuing, does anyone else have any comments or questions on this particular application? If not, we can move into regular meeting and, um, hearing none, we're moving into regular meeting.
Appreciate it, guys.
Uh, thank you very much, and, uh, thank you to, uh, council and, uh, good luck. All right, folks, we're gonna go, we got three items on regular meeting. Um, I will speak for all of us, I think, when I say to, uh, Thomas, great job on the, uh, new singular wireless, uh, uh, resolution. Uh, it's a really solid document. Uh, with that.
Here, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, Randy, it's yours.
I don't have the resolution.
No?
I mean, maybe I have the, uh,
We got the, it was circulating.
From Thomas, that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thomas, you didn't change it since you sent it over on Tuesday, on, uh, Monday, right?
No, I sent it, no, what I sent, uh, I, I, Randy incorporated, or Randy asked for some changes that I incorporated, that I sent out this morning. It was labeled Resolution Number Five. Um, Jody has it. Uh, I sent it to the entire board this morning.
Okay. Uh, so I, I, I do have that one, and I, I read through it and I had a couple of, uh, maybe we can just do it on the fly.
No, I, I, I looked at your comments real quick, but I didn't really have time to evaluate. Like, me and Eric looked at them. What we went with, what we have as the final resolution is what I sent to the board this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think, uh, we, we have timeframe issues on this, right?
Yeah, we need to get this done.
I mean, it's like, we, we, we can't delay it.
And, uh, Randy, we did include all of your comments from, I suppose that was the first round. I, I guess maybe there was a, another group of comments, but.
No, you guys did a great job, and I appreciate that. I guess I have a question, Eric, for you. The, uh, there's a, there, you discussed the height very well. In one section of the rev, resolution, it says, um, uh, the height of the steeple is 30 feet 6 inches AGL, and the roof peak is 22 feet 6 inches AGL. The proposed campanile would be substantially taller than any nearby structure at 50 feet, almost 20 feet higher than any structure near it, right? And then in eight, it says, um, the planning board finds that the proposed campanile will not be compatible with the adjacent existing chapel building as well as the surrounding residential properties. Um.
Yeah, but it's, Randy, you're, you're reading the, the yellow highlighted stuff, right?
Now, this has been incorporated into the final document. I'm looking at the final.
Yeah, Randy, I think the, the, the difference that you're looking at here is, you're, I think what you're saying is 20 feet versus 28 feet. Well, you're talking about, and once it references structure and then the other references building.
Right.
So, you know, it's, it's like 20 feet higher than any structure, but 28 feet higher than any building.
If you look at the, if you look at the one that was circulated this morning, Randy, they're both highlighted in yellow. The one in se, in paragraph eight is the last sentence. And then, and it's just.
All right.
So it's good. It's, it's, it, he's, he's got it.
Okay.
So, without further ado, it's your, it's your application, Randy.
Okay. Uh, okay, so, uh, why don't I see the resolution? Just a second. Uh.
I can forward it to you right now if you, if you want.
Or somebody else can read it. Introduce it.
I, I will. I have it right here.
Yeah, I, I have it also. Go ahead.
Okay. In, in the matter of the application of Verizon Wireless at Montauk Community Church Site, Site Plan Sp-
Oh, is it the Montauk Church or the St. Peter's?
Oh, I beg your pardon. No, I don't have the, I don't have it.
Hold on, I, I just clicked it down.
Yeah, I have the wrong, I'm looking at the wrong thing. Sorry.
Okay.
Isn't it just this? Isn't it just this resolution? There's not, there's nothing further, right? It's only just the resolution.
There's a denial of St. Peter's, and then there's a.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let me send it out again, because I, I don't want to get this wrong.
I don't, I don't have a denial sheet. I just have this, the actual resolution.
Let, let me send out the act, just, uh, bear with me for just a second. Let me just send out the final.
Site plan determination, site plan special permit determination. That's the number five one.
Okay, hold on, let.
The right one.
Please just let me make sure that we have the right, right thing here.
Yes, you, I think you only need to read that, Randy.
I only need to, you only need to read the G, paragraph G, disposition of application.
Don't you just have to reference the resolution and say you've read it and move for the adoption?
I think so. Yeah.
We all received it at 10:44 this morning from Thomas.
I think that's all we need to do. Randy, you just have to read, in the matter of the application, St. Peter's Chapel Site Plan Special Permit, uh, to comply with the application, you know, you've read the resolution and moved to the adoption. I think that's all you have to do.
I have the, uh, resolution that Thomas just sent.
Well, it's not a resolution, it's a determination, isn't it?
Right, it is.
It's the same thing.
Well, let's make sure we get it right, because it does say, the, the, the document I'm looking at says Site Plan Slash Special Permit Determination.
Okay.
And then you go towards, you go to the very end, and it says disposition of application.
Right, right. Okay, so I'm gonna do, I'll do it the way we usually do it.
The way we usually do it, then.
Okay, in the matter of the application of new singular wireless AT&amp;T at St. Peter's Chapel, personal, personal wireless service facility, PWSF, Site Plan Special Permit, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300103624.1, Site Plan Special Permit Determination. Um, usually read, uh.
We usually don't read anything.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you just say, I've read the determination.
Yeah.
And this is, just to make it clear, Thomas, how, how should I, this is the, uh, is there any particular way, or this is, this is the resolution? See if it has a revised, uh, no, it doesn't have anything on it, so I'm just gonna, dated July 22nd, 2020. Um.
Randy, man, just.
Disposition of application.
There you go. Read that.
The application is denied as described herein, subject to any conditions or modifications specified in each below. Uh, nature of denied use personal wireless service facility dated July 22nd, 2020. I've read the resolution and moved for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
One abstention. So we have five in favor, one abstention, one absence.
Didn't, uh, didn't Ed abstain as well?
Ed's recused.
Oh, Ed's recused.
Recused.
That, was not recused, not, please, not absent, recused.
But he's intact absent, so.
He is absent, but.
Recusal overweighs his absence.
No, weighs that.
Outweighs.
It does.
Supersedes.
I don't think it does. He re, he was absent from the vote, and the recusal, he theoretically could send it, but he's absent, so that's the end of that.
I agree, I agree with you.
Getting late, let's just move on, shall we?
I agree with Lou. The recusal trumps the app.
Yeah, we are.
Recusal word, Randy.
We know, we don't have to have that, it doesn't matter.
Right.
Live letter, bird.
Sharon, Sharon, please, help me.
Okay, am I doing my?
Verizon Wireless Mono Community Church.
Yes, we're, okay. The resolution is mending the, in the matter of the application of Verizon Wireless at Montauk Community Church Site Plan Special Permit Personal Wireless Service Facility, Tax Map Number 300 dash 49 dash 2 dash 13. Um, this is a, an amend, amendment that was made, and I've read the resolution and adopt, uh, vote to adopt.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'm gonna abstain because I don't think we looked at enough alternatives.
All right, passed and carried, five, one, with one absence.
Five?
Five in favor.
Favor, no in opposition, one abstention, one abs-
One abstention, one absence. Okay, finally. Lou.
Okay. I think we're all getting batty. That's what it is. Once we pass 10 o'clock, it gets weird.
I know, I know. Well, we're not supposed to be meeting this late.
Okay, in the matter, in the matter of the application of Fenchel Menzer Site Plan Special Permit.
Fenchel Menzer?
No, 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 it's Fisher Edition.
The Fisher Editions.
Fisher Editions. I don't have Fenchel Menzel.
It's an extension of time, Fisher Editions Porch and Patio Site Plan.
Boy, this thing cannot get right.
Um, it's on the last page of the applic, of the package.
Yeah, well, then we have a problem again. And I'm sorry I'm picking it up now instead of earlier. Or maybe I'm not understanding it. Um, is, is this, is this extension of time only till August 9th to 2020?
Yes, the applicant has to come in with another extension request.
Okay, all right. Then let's keep rolling here. In the matter of the application of Fisher Editions Porch and Patio Site Plan, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300 dash 17 dash 1 dash 10. With regard to the extension of time, I have read the resolution dated July 22nd, 2020, and I moved to adopt it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed and carried, six, nothing, one absence. All right, folks, it is 10.
Motion to adjourn.
10:18. So, all those in favor of adjourning?
Thanks, Planning Department. Great job.
Great job, legal and planning.
Legal and planning. Nice work, Thomas. Nice work planning, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, LTV. Everybody will see you in two weeks.
Bye, 99.
Wait.